Can we start with a motion to approve the bills?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion being made and seconded. Any discussion? There being none. All those in favor? unanimous. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of April 22nd?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion being made and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes from April 22nd? There being none. All those in favor? unanimous. Thank you. We have a Charles. We have a Charles. This is your last
Oh, yeah.
meeting in front of us, Charles.
It is.
Thank you for everything.
That's right.
Good evening. CHS would like to start off tonight with a congratulations to the high school co-ed cheerleading team who flew out to the Virginia Beach National Tournament this past weekend and worked their way to a score of 103.7. Not only was this a school record, but also won them the title of the 2019 national championships. The whole team was escorted through the town by the Clinton Police and Fire Departments, and were welcomed back to the high school by friends and family. Great job to the team's coaches and student athletes. The high school is in the midst of AP exams this week, as students from sophomores through seniors use the knowledge that they've attained from the entire school year to pass tests that students all over the world are taking simultaneously. While the exams are finishing up, senior final exams will be beginning this Thursday, which is the first day of exams, and then seniors will complete their, on their last day, May 24th, for their final exam. The Clinton High School chapter of the National Honors Society will be inducting its newest generation of young scholars into the organization on Tuesday, May 14th. These sophomores and several juniors have worked their way past couple of months to apply themselves and show their qualities as students and as members of the community. Congratulations to all of those that will be inducted, and those seniors that will be honored as graduates on the same night before going to a ceremonial dinner with the Rotary Club. Those students that have been selected as high achievers and those with outstanding effort will be honored this Wednesday night at 6:00 PM in the high school auditorium. Celebrated students and their families will be recognized for their commitment to the classroom, and CHS alumni Emily Erkinen will be the guest speaker for the night. CHS will be hosting a day of voter registration this Wednesday, May 15th, during all lunches for students that will be eligible to vote this coming elections. The annual senior sports banquet will be held next Tuesday, May 21st, at CHS to celebrate the final year of athletics for the class of 2019. The high school varsity softball team will be hosting a strikeout cancer fundraiser night on Thursday, May 16th, at 7:00 PM at Vale Street in Clinton. The team will be playing against the Toronto Regional High School Varsity Team, and the Gales will be playing in honor of Mrs. Patterson's fight against cancer and Bay Path High School softball player Trish King, who was recently diagnosed with leukemia. The Bay Path team will also be coming to support the game and the fundraising that Clinton is doing. As a result of the recent campaign for strikeout cancer shirts, more than 130 shirts were sold, in addition to the shirts worn by all the softball players that were covered by the Clinton Police and Fire Departments. All of the proceeds from the shirts will be going to the causes of the charity Kim's Kids and Trish King's GoFundMe account. Relay for Life is making a comeback this year. The high schools team will be meeting for the event this Saturday, May 18th, in Acton at 6:00 PM, and stay up until 6:00 AM the following morning. Every student on the team will have raised $100 towards their cause of cancer treatment for the Relay for Life organization, and this year, the team will be walking in honor of the late Kim Patterson. The team is accepting donations of all sorts, and will also take gifts of food and drinks to help occupy the 12 hours of staying awake. A memorial service will be held this Sunday, May 19th, at 2:00 PM in the high school auditorium for the impact that Mrs. Kim Patterson had on the school and the entire Clinton community. Everyone is welcome to attend. Thank you.
Charles, thank you very much for everything. Any questions for Charles before he departs for the last time?
I just had a question. So, the academic awards on Wednesday, we had in our notes that it was seven, but you mentioned it was six. Just wanted to be, just want to clarify.
Six for students?
Oh, maybe the students have to be there?
Academic awards.
Seven of them.
It is seven. Okay. Maybe the students have to be there at six. Okay, thanks.
Anything from the PTA tonight?
Nothing at this time.
CPAC?
Nothing at this time.
All right, thank you. CTA?
We have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Any public comment? There being none. Dr. Meyer?
All right, so, first agenda item for tonight is a school lunch program update. So invite Karen and Dave and Nan to come on up if you want. Nan, you should have the materials in your packet.
Here you go, Karen.
Remember, this is a, this is a follow-up. We did have a report about, sort of through the midway of the year, where we were looking at, you know, the budget and, you know, possible projected deficit. I think that, you know, they've been working on making some changes. We've been working on, you know, squaring up some of the invoices or some of the other programs, like the after-school program and stuff. I think, right now, it projects that there would not be a operating deficit, if that's correct. And I'll let, turn it over to you guys in a minute, and then, and then the other thing we want to just update on a little bit was the lunch balances, so.
Okay. Well, I'll go over a little bit of the figures that I worked with Nan, and then I'll hand it over to Dave. So Nan and I work together, and the, we have two reports for you. The first one is the food service budget, and the second one is a report on the breakfast and lunch counts from 18, at 4:30-18, and then 4:30-19. Okay, so that you know what we're working on. So we use the actuals through 4:30-19, and then estimates for the rest of the year. And currently, the current projection appears to be a profit of $12,004.13, which is much improved compared to what we had at the other quarter, the last update.
Yeah.
Last update, we had a loss, but as we get closer to the end of the year, we're able to put more actuals rather than estimates. Unfortunately, this does not include the bad debt for the unpaid mail charges. These unpaid mail charges are not just this year, they're through the years. So with the unpaid mail charges, that would bring us to a loss of $11,130.
So what's that?
That's what's owed.
Right, so what is owed? I mean, I don't have that.
So the total, the total amount of, is about $23,000 of everything, and that includes, and that's through all the years, and we'll, and we'll talk about that in a minute.
Correct. Just to give you an idea on the, one of the reasons I think it increased, you had some improve, increase in the mails and increase in the catering revenue. Okay, you had some increase with the daycare, the triconsul, triconsul and the workforce breakfast, and the daycare especially because we have a lot more kids. So, the revenue was giving them snacks and stuff. Was nice to increase that. The bad debt, the total that we have, is $23,543. To give you a little idea of the mail charges collected since the response to the letters, the total was $5,116 that has been collected of the total $11,808, and that was the letters that we sent out. So, 43% of that total was collected.
That's great.
But unfortunately, the unpaid mail charges continue for, so, different kids.
Right.
But it does show that the letters are helping with that, so.
And that there's a process in place, right, so that you're exercising due diligence and trying to track it down.
Right. So that is working.
So our plan, I think our plan would be to probably do one more round of letters before school's over to the people that we've been doing it to, the people who are over the threshold of, we've been doing $25, we've been doing. And then probably right at the end of the year. So part of what we're finding is, we're sending these letters to people who are over $25, and then we're getting a pretty good response to those letters, but then now the people who were at 10 creep up to 13, and you know, so it's, so we'll send out another letter to the over $25 people before the end of the school year, and then probably try to do some reminders for people to try to square up their lunch counts before the end of the year, and then I think we'll do a mailing to everyone with an outstanding balance once school ends, and see what we can collect, and see if those letters might help us get kind of caught up in a way, because now we wouldn't be, it would be no increases happening at that time.
And just as a food service director point of view, there's nothing that we can, we have to serve them a meal. Okay, we never, ever will refuse a student a meal. And we get away with the grilled cheese, you know, so, what they're receiving is the same meal that, that we, you know, the type, the type A lunch that any other student would receive, so.
So I think, yeah.
One of the reasons why, where.
So what's important, so one thing that's important to realize is that of that amount, that $23,000 that we keep saying, we're going to try to clean that up a little bit this year, so we're working with a better amount when we come into next, next year, because there's about $12,964 of that basically belongs to people who either are now, basically, at some point they had debt, and then they qualified for free and reduced lunch, right? So those are people who have free and reduced lunch, but there was outstanding debt kind of on the books at the time. So that's probably not money that we're really going to be able to recapture. And about $4,360 actually belongs to students who have withdrawn from school over the years. So, that, you know, for whatever reason, they, you know, they moved and they had a $30 balance, or they, whatever happened. So there's about $17,000 that, you know, when we say 23, well, there's 17 of that that truly is classified basically as, as bad debt.
Right.
We're, we're going to be chasing that number forever. So I think that we're going to try to clean that up at the end of this year. Basically, probably we'll almost essentially purchase that debt from the school department, or from the food service department, and then we can handle it the best way we want to handle it, whether we want to go to a debt collector or something for that, for that amount. We could talk, we can investigate that. I know you get pennies on the dollar, but there's really no, not much more of a recourse for that. But the, that other amount, that like $6,000 that we can probably capture, that's the ones we'll really be focusing on with the letters that we'll do the end of this year and the end of the school year.
Any questions for the food service department?
Yeah, $6 grand is a heck of a lot better than it was.
Yeah.
Especially when you break it down with the, you know, the lost debt is lost debt, you know.
Right.
You said you're going to, you know, get it, figure that out later, but.
And our goal, you know, the food service, it's always to increase participation in both the breakfast and the lunch program, and that's what we're working on. Just a, a couple of things that we're doing, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Karen, Nan, and myself, we plan on attending a healthy kids, healthy program summit on May 21st and May 22nd of this month, and also on June 5th, I think, right, Karen? At 7:00 AM, we plan on visiting Walpole High School, just to get an idea of their breakfast program. Because if you pick between breakfast and lunch, I think that it's more so our breakfast program that's lacking participation compared to the lunch. So, you know, just to go there, look, observe, ask questions, get an idea of what they're doing, I mean, it's a good thing, so, we have that planned. Also, we were talking about next year, maybe, you know, at the high school, this is all in the works, of maybe having like a, like a break period between breakfast and lunch, where the students can come down to the cafeteria and receive like, you know, purchase muffins or cereals, just to kind of, like, we were just talking about calling it a fuel break, you know, a fuel break, really, just like.
Probably not. That's probably wouldn't be at the high school for next year, that'd be at the middle school for next year.
Middle school?
Yeah, for next year, yeah. But we could, yeah.
Okay, middle school. We can work on that, yeah. Well, I thought it was going to be the, definitely the high school also, so, all right.
In any case.
Any case.
So the loss that, that it shows in breakfast numbers, do you attribute that to something specific, or?
Um, well, again.
I just saw, I think, if I'm reading it right, does it mean we served like 1,600 less breakfast so far this year?
For the, for the school year.
Yeah. I mean, I, is that?
I mean, it's, it's, what we've been serving for the last five or six years, that's where we have to sit with the, you know, the administrators and figure this out. Maybe buses coming in late, you know, this, that's what we're actually going to visit these, you know, other programs to see what they have to offer, and, you know, you know, work it out.
And one of them at Walpole that we're going to visit is the, what they call it, they call it breakfast, like eat, exercise, and book or something like.
Eat, exercise, and, yeah.
It's an elementary program where they actually build in the breakfast program, some movement stuff, and then they actually read a, read a book and take a little break in that. So we're going to, that's one of the other reasons why we're going to Walpole to check out that program for the elementary level.
And they also have, at Walpole, the reason the high school is a good thing to look at, they have the second chance breakfast, so you get.
That's what I was referring to, that's what I, yeah, when I said.
It's great that you're exploring other ideas. Question?
Question.
And Rob's going with us, too.
So, how about first, you know, it's great to see that we have answers to what's going on, and thank you for breaking down that 17,000, because that's very helpful to know, you know, because I think we always say, oh, the number keeps growing, it's compiling, but it's good to know where our base is as far as, you know, not be able to recover from necessarily without additional support. When I look at the numbers fast, and I know you'll correct me if I'm off here, it looks like we've lost out on students that are eligible for free and reduced lunch. Is that accurate, that our numbers are dwindling there?
No, that's high.
Now, that's. Well, I'm looking at the comparison, Dave, between the free.
Oh, that might be just, in participation, maybe. Yes, but the actual numbers of free and reduced are not.
Thank you for answering that. So, so it's actually that it's just our participation of the free is taking a major dip, not that the actual amount of students that are eligible.
Right, that's right.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And it's, and just a reminder, when we compare the middle school numbers, you'll see all the middle school numbers are lower, but we need to remember that middle school also has 20% less kids, so you would expect, but you'd expect to see the bump on the elementary, and the elementary's kind of held consistent, yeah. So you're right in the sense that there is one, but just so people realize, it's almost, that we got, it's not necessarily the drop in the middle school, but it's there wasn't that big increase in the elementary.
All right, thank you for clarification.
Also, that elementary, Steve and I were looking at it, saying that the elementary's gone up significantly, and wondering if bringing one of that classes down to the elementary school.
Help them some.
I don't know why, all of a sudden, it's, the elementary's isn't doing very well, whereas the middle school isn't doing as well. Definitely the one grade, but the bump is, seems to be a little bit more than a one grade.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If less students are participating in breakfast or whatever program, can't we simply buy less food?
No, you have to meet the requirements.
No, no, I know, but it's, no, but it's, because it sounds, it just sounds like, you know, we're talking about now doing a program in between breakfast and lunch, we're trying to get more kids to eat breakfast, but like, it's like supply and demand, right? I mean, if they're, I.
I think, I think part of it is, our, your biggest cost in that program, cost driver, I mean, food obviously is one, and your point of saying, like, you should be only really ordering for what you're serving, right?
Like, at this month, like.
But your labor, our labor cost, you know, it's not that it's significantly less that we're like able to cut to staff members.
Gotcha.
Or we might have to have staff that are there anyway, early, who are preparing the lunch, that if they're there already, and we could just take 10 minutes to open it up to maybe sell some snacks, you know, make snacks available for kids, for like a snack break or a second chance breakfast or something like that, then it's another opportunity to capture some revenue, and also make sure that kids who might be hungry at that point. You know, if a kid ate before school, and they come in, and they're just not hungry right at school, and now it's two hours later, and they have a break, and they can run down and grab a free breakfast, they might do that.
Yeah, I just, I don't know if we want to get into like really pushing food onto students just to try to
Right.
make money on the, the food budget. That's the only point. It just sounded like that's where we're getting it, and I agree with your point. If it's mostly like staffing, if food, food cost is actually a small percentage of the, the budget, like, then I get it, that makes sense.
I also think, like, visiting the other districts, like, if you're going to start with Walpole, it's good to get ideas on how, you know, how they do their breakfast, how they do their lunch. And, you know, if you're visiting other districts and they visit you, everybody has different ideas you share, so, I mean, Dave might be doing something that one district likes, and you go to that district and say, well, I'm not using that. So it's good to just visit to get ideas that you can share the two districts. So I think that would be helpful.
And I think, I think the one other thing would be, kind of like that example I just said, is that, you know, if, if students qualify for like free and reduced, like, meals, I mean, you're, you're hoping to try to help those families, you know, help those students or those families get nutritious meals when they can, and, you know, so we are just trying to really look at our internal processes and make sure that, you know, if the kid's not eating breakfast because by the time the bus gets there and drops them off, they feel like they don't have time and they're running, if there's another way in the day that that kid can access that breakfast, then that's a good, yeah.
If there's definitely students that are, like, they want to eat, but the schedule is like maybe difficult.
Well, that's the way I look at it as a, as a director. I mean, you're giving them a second chance. If they, they get into school.
Right.
You know, something will be offered
Right.
for them to have a second chance to come down. Just, we've done it in the past, you know, students coming down a while back, probably even when you were in school, you know, coming there grabbing a muffin or something like that.
Right.
I mean, it, it, it's, it's a fact, I mean, it, it, it fuels the brain, it, the body, you know? It's just, it's good to get through the day, to give them a boost. They missed breakfast, their bus is late, so on, you know, just to have a period. You know, again, we have to work with administrators to figure it out and stuff like that, but it's just, it's a good thing, you know, between, there's not much time, so.
Right.
That's where you have to really figure it out, you know, when are we going to do this? Because you have breakfast, then when are we going to have the break, and then you go right into lunch.
Is there anything available at the end of the day for the, the athletes?
What's that?
No, you know, like, the kids are playing sports.
Yeah.
So is there anything, you know, like, they get out, middle school gets out at 2:30 and they practice at 3:00. Is there anything available for the kids to grab, you know, something there between the time they get out of practice and they go?
I, I mean, I, I don't have anything, you know, set in place where they, you know, we have a program where, you know, they can do that.
We don't have any staff working at that time either.
Right, that's what I asked.
That only.
That's actually the better answer.
No, it's true. What do you want me to say?
I shouldn't just ask the answer.
You want me to be pulse and track and bring us?
No, I was just thinking, you know, because, yeah, my, my son's one that calls me every day to bring up a sandwich at 2:30.
But that goes back to, I mean, we do that, we do the daycare.
But I, yeah, no, I haven't, I don't want to cost you.
Yeah.
If we understand that your staff, you're keeping them on for a certain point, and we realize, you know, like Dr. Meyer said, you know, your staffing is where your money is really starting to add up, but I've seen, because I have to visit quite a few schools, where you might do like a preorder, and so it's like a boxed opportunity, and then that's developed ahead of time, and then they're able to access that before they go to their sporting event.
I mean, we can sit here all day, it gets complicated.
No, but I think that's, I mean, those are the types of ideas, so that's why I think we're going to that conference, we're going to visit Walpole. So I just think, yeah, look at ways we can meet the needs of students.
And you know, with our number of free and reduced, we get so much commodities from the USDA that we have to use up, so, pretty much, they're, they're getting a quality lunch
I know, there's only so much.
Right from scratch, and, and you have to use up what the USDA.
But I think, I think overall, financially, our picture is, 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 from the, from a year, fiscal year operating budget perspective, our picture is much better than it was earlier. I think we've, we've looked at that, and I think at the time it was a little, you know, we were looking, okay, we're going to finish with a negative, how much of a negative, and now we've got everything together, and, and I think part of what helped it was the, like you said, the, the increase in the, the daycare program, the students that stay for the after school care, they, part of what they get is a snack that's provided by the cafeteria. Those numbers have really increased, so as we put those invoices in, that kind of helped, helped boost things there. So, it looks like at the, you know, at the end of the year, we should be operating, you know, if we look at a snapshot of the year, the year itself would be in the positive, and then the, looking at the student, amount owed from student lunches is a separate issue. We've done, Nan's worked hard on breaking that out to where that debt came from as far as, you know, what we might conceivably recover, and, and I think the letters have been helping get a response to it. Every time we send around the letters, you're getting about almost $2,000.
And those kids I've been checking, the ones that paid their balances are keeping a positive balance. They're making payments now and keeping their accounts going, so.
That's great.
Correct.
So we, 5,000 is what we've collected since we sent the letters out.
Yeah.
But we mentioned that there was also some new debt that, from when the letters went out. Do you have the figures for what that, the, the new debt that has built up since the letters went out?
I know the total current unpaid mail charges from, like, at February was $18,179, in March was $18,048, and now 5,6, it's $19,183. So it is climbing. So I think, like, we talked about, all of us, that you just have to be consistent with these letters, because this is a problem that's going to continue.
And that's what I'm trying to get at, is like, so I think 5,000, that's great that we're collecting that money, but if in that same period of time, the new debt
Right.
is greater than 5,000, the balance is still going to be getting bigger.
But a lot of those kids never got a letter, so when they get the letter, we're hoping they do what the other ones did. When they actually got a letter from the superintendent, then they pay it.
Right, right, right.
So as I'm saying, like, I guess people, because every time we send the letters, it's not like we're, most people have been responsive.
Some debt has to build up before you send the letter, so that's going to be.
But by the end of the year, what we'll do is, at the end of the year, we'll send a letter out, once the school year's over, we'll send a letter out to everybody that just says, please try to pay your unpaid mail balance before the start of next year, here it is, even if it's $5. And that, that could be a friendlier letter, but.
Exactly, we just send it out when it's $25 every year.
And then we're thinking, like, next year's scheduling that.
Right, because I think is, we didn't start our letters till January this year, so we'll try to do it more regularly throughout the year next year, too, so it doesn't have a time to build. But I think overall, like I said, we think we got a pretty positive response from the people who received letters, we got a pretty positive response, we just got to keep up on that.
Yeah, because the last time we did that, years ago, a couple of years ago, we, two, but I, it just has the problem that has to be consistent with the letters, because it doesn't matter, you collect it, and then you get more from somebody else.
Yeah.
And they're not going home with the kids, right? They're going, they're.
They're going to mail them.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. All right, so the next, the next agenda item is FY '20 budget version B. So there's, I put a summary sheet here. The, so from a revenue standpoint, the Senate Ways and Means came out with their recommendation for Chapter 70 increases. Our Chapter 70 increase from the Senate Ways and Means was $1,600, $6,252, or an 8.1% increase. That's basically $192,000 more than what the House had recommended, which was, you know, $30,000 more than what the governor had recommended. So you know, the final number probably won't be a million, just like we said, you know, they'll, they'll come, they'll come in there, but it'll be more than the, probably more than the 777 that the governor had, probably more, probably more than the 830 or whatever it was that the House had, so it'll be in there somewhere. See that, that listed there. The Finance Committee, working with the Finance Committee in town, they've requested an education, they feel that they can fund an education budget of a 4% increase, which would be the $22,711,742, and an additional $100,000 textbook and technology warrant article. So that was what they've recommended. Also, they're going to support the CMS roof replacement as part of the capital improvement article, which was our largest single capital request. And it should be noted that that number of 22 million has the facilities budget removed, because that's being added to the town-wide facilities department. So, I just think it's important that we capture all these different changes before we start comparing things, because, you know, in the, in the wrong sheet, you could almost be saying like, you know, hey, the education spending only went up, you know, $780,000, and we're getting an extra $800,000 in educational aid. Well, that doesn't, you know, some of that increase to the facilities department is also there, you know, there's other costs, indirect costs to the town, like health insurance and those types of things that, that are a result of the, the school department that also are factored in there, just not in our sort of line item budget, so.
So that, that 22.7 that the Finance Committee, right now, I know it's just a draft.
Yeah.
Or close to final.
Yeah.
That does it, does or does not include the Chapter 70?
That includes the Chapter 70, yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's everything the town's saying.
Right, so the town contribution for the, but that's what I'm saying, we got to be careful, because that Chapter 70, like, yes, we think of it as educational funding, it is educational funding, but it also can offset like insurance costs for educational employees. It can offset like the custodial salaries for the school department, which are now in the facilities department, right? So, in a way, you know, in a way, Chapter 70 is essentially kind of just town aid, as long as you're spending more than that, you know, more than your, your minimum requirements for the, on the schools.
Okay.
And thank you for that clarification. Just for a quick question, though, so this was allocated before, we're hearing that 8.1% increase, is that correct?
Yeah, when that was done, it was more based on the, I think we had the, mostly on the 770 or the 800, about 800,000, which is like what the governor and the House had, right? which is like what the governor and the House had, right? So if there was, if it lands more like, you know, 900,000 or something, then yeah, there's a, you know, it'd be to the good.
All right, thank you. So we have a conservative number there.
We have a conservative number, yes. So, go ahead.
I'm sorry, has it been resolved how the facilities department, like, how the warrant articles are being handled? Like, is it, is, is rustling up, is it going to be one warrant article for all of the capital improvement plans? And like, in one article, or are they broken up into, I don't know if you guys have had that discussion?
Yeah, so my understanding was it was going to kind of be, if, I don't know if it was going to be presented all as one warrant article, or if it was going to be different ones. I think last conversation we had, I thought it was going to be one kind of facilities department or article that said, you know, this, you know, $2 million to fund, you know, 500,000 for a roof, or whatever the number is, you know what I mean? And to, to fund these projects, you know? So I believe that's the intent. I don't, I haven't seen the warrant, so I don't know if they split them up at all, or, or how they did that. But I know they're kind of all being presented from the facilities.
Yeah, I think that would be ideal. I hope they do.
Yeah, I think it would be.
You wouldn't want to be the last warrant article to deal with that, you know, by that time.
Well, like we talked about, that was our whole, that was kind of the whole beauty of this position. Was that we should be able to just kind of allocate one amount for capital improvements, so that we can hit that prioritized list, instead of everyone fighting amongst themselves.
Right, exactly.
So to get to the 4%, kind of to back into that 4%, to say, how could we meet the Finance Committee's recommendations? We were actually pretty close, because when you took out the, the facilities budget, the facilities budget actually had like a, an increase of about 8% because of some of the positions that, that the facilities director was requesting, and some of the adjustments he made. So when you looked at the education only, we were right at around four, a little under 4.5%. So it was really about a half a percent. So what we did, we adjusted salaries for the confirmed retirements and resignations. We reduced the out-of-district transportation by 31,395. That was for McKinney-Vento and special ed, and that was basically based on new quotes we got for those routes from companies. We solicited quotes for them, and I'll be bringing a contract to you, probably at the next school committee meeting, for your approval for our, some of our out-of-district transportation. But that, that quote came in favorable, so we were able to reduce that. We took $24,210 in Chromebooks for the high school, which would have been requested, because we confirmed with the people who had made the initial request that we would be able to, with the, with the move to one-to-one technology, we, we wouldn't need to get those, those additional sets of Chromebooks. We'd kind of been leaving them in there, thinking that, because I know we brought up the idea, could we do freshmen and sophomores or something like that? So it was kind of in there to say, you know, three, three sets of Chromebooks wasn't enough. The 24,000 was about three sets of Chromebooks, about 20, 72 Chromebooks. Wasn't quite enough to do another grade, but, you know, so we were, we were kind of leaving it there to see if we could maybe bump it up to two grades, or take them out, we took them out at this point. And 23,000 in Project Leadway Robotics Kits, I think they've made some slight changes to those kits, is that correct, Brenda? Didn't they tweak them a little bit? So we're trying to order the new kits, and you'll see an example of what the, the kits look like right now. But there's, there's a lot of work that goes into those kits, as far as like organizing them, getting them ready. So we're ordering them now, so we can get a jump for next year's class. By doing those reductions, then we were able to look at additions. We did an adjusted vocational tuition to actual, which wasn't that bad of an increase, but there was a slight increase in that from what we had been budgeting from version A. And one position that we've kind of added in here was a family outreach coordinator position. So, and that's one we can talk about right now. But what we're looking at is trying to find someone, our goal will be, this would be a multilingual position to serve as a family resource. One of the things we would hope that this position could serve as is kind of like a registrar for the district. One of the things that we did get cited for, I guess, in our tiered focus monitoring, was our consistency in registering English language learners and our, how we did like home language surveys and those types of things, and, and assess the students' level of English proficiency when they register. Translations of communications to help us reach all of our populations, so whether, whoever that office is coming from, whether it's principal, assistant principal, superintendent's office, helping us to translate those communications. Providing a resource or advocate for parents in meetings. So basically someone that we could provide, whether it's an IEP meeting, a suspension hearing, a 504 meeting, any type of thing like that, there would be someone that could serve basically as a resource or advocate for the parent, to make sure that people understand the process and how things go. And, and probably serve as a liaison to our LPAC, our English Learner Parent Advisory Group, which will be kicking off shortly. So that was something that we felt there was, there was a need for, as we looked at some things that we're reeling, like the, the tiered focus monitoring report from the, that we just recently received, as well as the, the welcoming environment survey. We felt that having, having someone to help facilitate communication and really do some more family outreach and those types of things from a district perspective would be useful. We've added that in, we budgeted at about 47,210, which is an accidental number. If you look, it corresponds with the Chromebooks and the robotics kits up there, it's the same amount. I don't know, you know, I don't know if that's, you know, going to be enough. But I think we could also look at supplementing that number with potentially funds from either Title III or Title I, since it is family engagement, and, and figure that out. I have a lot of job descriptions that we've been post-polling from various districts to look at. A lot of communities have this, these positions, and we're trying to look at, to nail down the, the final job, like job description, salary range, qualifications, because they are kind of all over the place. Some places are, you know, they, you know, 47,000 would be high, the way some, some people, some districts have it. But they don't, their qualifications, they don't require a whole lot. That'd be very low compared to some other districts who are requiring, you know, like DESE certifications in different fields, whether that's Guidance Council, or, or some just, they don't necessarily look for DESE certification, but they at least want someone experienced with like social work or, or human services. So that's a, that's kind of a, that's probably the only major, major change to this budget, is we go to version B. And that's, so I wanted to bring that to you guys tonight, to see if you have any, any concerns with that. Questions? Go ahead.
Did you have an opportunity to take a look at, you know, so are we outsourcing translations and bringing in translators for meetings that you're referring to?
Yeah, so right now, we're usually either, either we're pulling staff, or sometimes we have to even, you know, pay staff to attend meetings and, and do that. We are also, I mean, one other thing we are looking at is contracting with a different translation company. There's one that's a, it's a more reasonable rate. It's a, it's like a call-in translation service that, it's like an on-demand call-in service, Lions Gate, Lions Bridge, one of them. And that's, so we're working on a contract for that, to kind of help us with that as well when needed. But, so I don't know if that answered your question, I think, and then I kept going.
So have you looked into, so by adding this position, is there a rough estimate of costs that would be eliminated, expense that'd be eliminated by adding this position in for those two areas?
There could be. I haven't, I haven't looked at the, what we might save in translation, I can, I can look at that. But I don't, you know, I, I would say right now, our, our actual translation costs aren't overly, I guess, from a financial standpoint, our, our translation costs right now aren't costing us a lot of money.
But we're not our clients, right?
Well, and we're also, we're also a lot of times pulling people from other responsibilities to serve as a translator. So, you know, they're, whether it's a, you know, a secretary, or a teacher, or somebody, you end up kind of pulling them away from what they're doing to kind of serve as a translator in a meeting. So I think that this would help provide some efficiencies by someone who's, who's able to do that, and someone who can be more of a, an advocate in the meeting.
So you're going in the direction I'm saying, so the advocacy is what I was thinking. Can, with our student database program, would this person have a capacity to be making sure that, you know, we're going in and identifying our current students along with the new students, to make sure that if they require translation, that it's appropriately red-flagged, however the system does.
Yeah, I would want this person to, yeah.
So that we're, we're not assuming that the data in there is accurate, we're going to go in and we're going to do a new audit with this person?
Yeah, I think we can do all, yeah, definitely, we can, we can certainly do all of that.
Because I think it's important, because I think sometimes you have old data for kids.
Yep.
We make assumptions that it's accurate, but if we could, you know.
And I also, I also think it's important to clarify too, that although the family outreach coordinator, one of the, one of the important things we feel is that this position would need to be someone who is, who's multilingual and able to support our, all our families. But we would also want them to support all of our families, you know? So even, you know, it's not, not only, you know, not just families who speak another language, right? So it would be someone who could, who could be an advocate for, you know, anyone, or, or a resource for anyone who, you know, is going through, you know, having a, a meeting or a situation where they're not, you know, quite sure exactly what the process is, so.
And I know register is part of the job description.
Yeah.
But I just don't want to assume, but kindergarten's such a big piece.
Yeah, I don't think we, right, okay.
Are they going to play a role in assisting with that?
I'm sure they would assist a little bit, in the sense of probably helping with identification for, you know, home languages and assessing those types of things. But the, the whole kindergarten, they'd be part of the kindergarten registration, they'd be a kindergarten registration team member. They wouldn't be doing it all alone.
Because we could, you know, benefit from some additional support and assistance for the families that are new to the school system. You know, I feel like if you don't have a child already in the system, or relative to the system, you know, there's sometimes a gap of knowledge and difficult to navigate the system.
And I know different, you know, each, each school kind of has some intricacies, you know, like you might want to, you know, for example, I know, like, if you're, if you're new to the district and you're enrolling at the high school, they're going to want to have a meeting with you, and they're going to want to sit and look at your transcripts and try to go, you know, it's a little different than kind of where at the elementary school, you might kind of walk in, and it's like, hi, I'm in second grade, you know? So it's a little bit, a little bit different process. So this would be someone who could be a, you know, help schedule that meeting, help make sure you know what they're going to be looking for, we need to bring to that meeting, those types of things.
And if it's a family that's new to the district, and they have kids in all three grades, you know, all three buildings.
Right.
They help navigate that one time.
Yeah. So that's the vision for that position, if, if we can pull it all together.
No, it's a, it's a great.
It's a great first step.
Steve, I mean, sometimes parents have disagreements with the education path program placement that like the school has for their individual child, like, you know, they just might think kids should be going in this direction or this path versus another path. And so when we say that this new position is going to be advocating, I'm just trying to understand, like, are we going to be, are we going to be like paying somebody to like be basically arguing like with us or advocating for, like if?
I think it more, I think it would be more of trying to help council families to understand, like, if they have a concern, what is the, how can we best find a resolution to that? Right, so if you are concerned that there's something going on, how can we help navigate, like, what are the proper channels, right?
Right.
Because I think sometimes, you know, we might assume like, you know, hey, why don't you just call the principal and start a meeting and go up there? Well, some people might not feel comfortable doing that, or they might not know that that's really even an option. So now if we have someone who's more of, you know, hey, if you come to me, I can help direct you in, okay, what's your concern? Now maybe I can help facilitate the right, the right meeting, or, or get you in contact with the right person, or, or help explain to you sort of what, you know, the letter you just got means, or something like that.
Gotcha, so just like making sure that they're aware of all options available and things like that?
Yeah.
Okay. And the 23,000 in Project Leadway Robotics Kits.
Yeah.
So we ordered them already.
Yeah.
But the bill's not going to be until the next budget cycle.
No, we're going to pay for it this year.
Oh, okay.
Because we're going to get them this year, and we're going to start sorting and organizing them, so that we have them ready for next year. So what we were able to do is when we looked at our existing, like, educational supplies budget, we were able to, to order them on this year's budget, even though there were a request for next fiscal year.
Oh, gotcha, okay, all right.
So by moving it up, we were able to, so, yeah.
Anything else?
Okay, so that's the summary of changes, the rest of this, you know, there's the standard kind of, you know, the same kind of spreadsheet you've seen throughout the whole budget process, it has more of the line-by-line breakdown. You know, if you, if you guys are comfortable with these, if you have, first of all, if you have any questions on any line-by-line, let me know. But the only ones that have changed really are the ones I, I highlighted in the summary.
Right.
If you have any change, if you have any concerns or whatever, let me know. Otherwise, what I would recommend we do is I can, I can put this in a final, like, budget book, basically, for like town meeting that we would use. And, you know, we could vote to, you know, approve that as your budget. You could vote tonight, if you're comfortable with that number, or you could wait till the 28th, when I bring back, you know, the, the big budget book of it, but.
Well, that's not, town meeting is the third, 28th's not going to give you enough time to get that.
Right, we wouldn't be able, I mean, as, yeah, you're right.
I mean, I, I think we've, you know, we've been presented the budget, we've had a public hearing on the budget. I, I'm fine asking for a motion to approve it.
When does the Finance Committee meets, what, tomorrow? I know that everybody seems to be meeting this week, but I thought the selectman met Wednesday, and I don't know when the, I mean.
I'm not sure, I would say this, I know from meeting with, with members of the Finance Committee and talking with, that this 4% increase in the $100,000 textbook and technology article is definitely something that they're willing to support.
That was my, okay.
Yep. So that's, that's their.
Have them change it come Tuesday, we're right back.
And I'd say, if anything, the only way that this number would change would be if we ended up really getting a million dollars, and we wanted to try to say, what'd you do with the extra, you know, whatever? But I don't think we would get, we would get any less than this. And, and as I mentioned, I said, if you look at the, you know, if you look at our, you know, our increase in, you know, and if you look at the summary page, in the operating expenditures, our, our general fund increase is really only $873,000, which basically is essentially what they're going to get in Chapter 70, right? Now, but that's not, you know, if you take that, like I said, take that with a grain of salt, it's not like, oh, the town's like giving us. No, the town still has, you know, there's still insurance costs, there's still, you know, the facilities department has now moved out of this. So there's increases to the facilities department. So I think the town is still, is still supporting us, but the 4% increase was a little more than we would normally get, and that's a recognition, I think, and, and still a $100,000 article on top of that, and the capital improvement article on top of that. And I think that's in recognition of the fact that we did get an increase in the Chapter 70 funding, so.
So Steve, I know this is the, this is the first year we've had the resource officer for the full year, right?
Yep.
I think everyone's been happy with it. Is there, you know, maybe not in this budget, because I think this was kind, it was kind of a pilot program this year. But do you, do we think that that's something that we would expand? Because I mean, right now, so we get coverage for like, the resource officer, kind of like the high school and the middle school, elementary school, separate building, have, you know, is that something that we, we think we may expand in the future to get a second resource officer to cover the elementary school and possibly the central offices? Or would we look at a, a different option, like some sort of a, like some sort of a security guard type of role, or something like that? I'm just, just curious, your thoughts on that?
So, I mean, I did actually, I sent a request for proposals just from, from a company that does like security guards and crossing guards and those types of things.
Right.
I have yet to hear back from them with any, you know, we had an initial exchange of like, what are you looking for? I haven't actually got the dollar amount on that yet.
Sure.
But we are starting to kind of look into that to see, you know, what would that, what would that look like?
Right.
I also know that one of the things that the, I believe that the, you know, I believe in the, in the budget, the police are getting a fairly good increase this year to try to help bring some of their budget back in line, because they've been very underfunded in things like the overtime line. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure where it landed off to talk to, to, you know, the chief and, after this budget cycle. But I think there was even some talk of even adding an additional police officer to help offset some of the overtime. Because if you can add a body and pay straight time, instead of paying overtime, it's, yeah. So the, so I think in that process, I think we can continue to, you know, work on our membrane of understanding with the police and see, you know, does it make sense to have sort of maybe, maybe even someone who's just on the, you know, the high street beat, who's more of a, you know, has the SRO training, makes more, you know? I think, I would say, they've been, they've been great, they have Officer Bedar than those guys. They have a, they have a strong presence down there, particularly in the morning.
Right.
So I don't know, it might even be something natural that we could even just work on incorporating some of those guys into that building a little more during the day. But I think, I definitely think it's been positive, and I think that we would want to look at how we can, you know, like you said, ensure kind of that both campuses kind of have access. And I also think creating some sort of redundancy, so maybe that there's, you know, at least two resource, two officers who kind of are in that SRO kind of role, whether it's every single day or not. But at least that way, you know, on the days that, you know, if, if Paul has to go to a training, it seems like invariably, if Paul has to go to a training, something will happen that day, and we'll realize why Paul's not in. But if we had someone else who kind of is also getting SRO trained and comfortable, it would be kind of be our go-to backup, that would be.
And I think these are exactly the types of things that you learn from doing a pilot program the first time. It's like, well, I think that all, everything you've mentioned is, makes sense for improving the plan. Because I think from all I've heard, it's been a success, and people have been happy with it. So I just think we should keep our eye on it.
Yeah, I think it's, I think Paul's been great, I think, and I think his, just his presence helps bring, I think, a level of, of almost honesty, when I think you're, when you're, you know, trying to figure out what, you know, from students, when you're trying to figure out, you know, what happened in a situation. And I think it's helped us to address things, you know, it's kind of ironic, but it's like if you bring, having.
You're better at shaking people down.
Yeah, but having, but having, having that police presence, you're really not even using it as a police presence, but just knowing that it's there has allowed us to kind of address things, I think, at a lower level.
Yeah, it's probably beneficial for them too, quite honestly, to get to know the student. Yeah, build a relationship.
Build relationships.
Yeah, build relationships, to know, know the students, so, okay, I'll take you a couple of questions.
Do we wanna make a motion to?
We have a couple of questions before we make a motion to the budget.
Okay, so they're not, okay, go ahead.
Sorry, I.
No, that's okay.
Yeah.
Just real briefly, can you, on the medical and therapeutic services contracted?
Which one is, where is?
So, it's.
H3.
Right, it's right below the library.
Oh, that's, that's.
So it's.
It's actually P4. Contracted services.
All right, one, two, three.
Can you just briefly, we'll be back at the speed as far as what's happening with that increase?
Most of that is our NECC Partner Program.
Okay.
So that's actually, there's actually.
The BCBA consultants in there, the ACEs contracted, the.
All that stuff.
All that's, that's where that's built into.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then, I'm sorry to ask another question, but as far as the elementary librarian assistant, is there a game plan to offset that? Because, you know, I know it's very important as far as the literacy, building that interest as far as elementary kids.
Yeah.
And I just wonder what our current plan is to keep that going.
So we'll have, we will have a teacher in that, in the library who will be running like a literacy special, what we ended up was, last year when we tried to post for an actual certified librarian, we were unsuccessful in finding a elementary, a certified elementary librarian, so what we actually have is we have the special who's run by a, it's still a literacy special, it's in the library, they're doing library things, but the person's not a certified librarian, they're a certified K-6 teacher, so.
So, in the library.
Yeah.
It's gonna be an educator that's.
It'll be staffed with a certified teacher, yes.
Because that's not currently happening, right?
It should be if it's, yeah, it might not be right now, but that's a result of some coverage for a maternity leave, but it should be.
But it's only temporary.
Yeah.
The long-term plan is to have that kind of.
Have a cert, yes, and I think even a long-term plan would be ultimately to try to move it back to a librarian at some point, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, thank you for that clarification.
No problem, thank you for the question.
Can we have a motion to approve the FY20 Budget Version B?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget version B.
There's a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, motion being made and seconded, now, any questions on FY20 Budget Virgin, Version B?
I just have one thing, and I know Ed brought it up already, but I just wanna make sure that it's clear to the Finance Committee.
Right.
The warrant articles.
Some of the changes?
No, right here on the warrant articles, that, you know, because the way the warrant articles are written and presented to the town at the actual town meeting, I think it's the left corner will say what, what department or what citizen position, then it'll say Finance Committee, is that they make sure that they put that under, whether they break them out or put one big one, but if it shows just the middle school roof, then it shows Facilities Department, not School Committee.
Yep, yep.
Just, again, I don't know if they're gonna break them out, that's their decision.
Yeah, and I can talk to Mike about what the warrant's gonna actually look like, and I can figure that in, in the Finance Committee, but, but I know what you're saying, you want it to be in, like, you want the article to be presented and endorsed by the Facilities Committee. I mean, we can say, if they wanna put in there that we endorse it too, they can do that, but it's presented basically by the Facilities Committee based on their needs assessment of the town.
Thank you. I am good.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, all those in favor? You need anything?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Goals and plans.
Yep, so we have a presentation for you tonight, each, each principal's going to, yeah, I tried to angle the seats a little bit so you guys had a fighting chance, and the.
And by all means, feel free if you, if you get a better angle by turning them.
Use some of those snacks, David's talking.
So I'm not gonna, I won't be, I'm gonna turn this over to our, our building principals, they're gonna tell you just a little bit about some of the changes that you could expect to see that are basically reflected in the budget you just approved, what are some things you might see next year as you, as you go through, so Rob, are you gonna go from there?
Whatever you want.
Well, you can either go here, so you can work your own slides, or you can have.
Good evening, today is, we're just going to go over quickly the Clinton Elementary School, some scheduling and programmatic changes, I'm very proud of the fact that I believe the elementary staff, everybody from the administration all the way through has worked diligently in order to work on the scheduling and programmatic changes from this year to next year, we've come a long way in, in one year, and I believe special thanks goes to, you know, Megan Silvio, Melissa Piermarini, who have taken on math and literacy coaching positions, along with the teachers who have worked really, really hard, every day we're seeing more progress by our students from wind blocks to other programs that are in there, so briefly to give you an update on next year.
There you go.
Just a reminder of our school times, our preschool, there's two sessions in our preschool, we have our, and we have a three-year-old program, and we have a four-year-old program, we begin about nine o'clock in the morning, we leave at 11:30, and then we come back at 12:45 to 3:15, the three-year-old program is three days per week, and the four-year-old program is four days per week, our kindergarten goes in at 9:15 to 2:55, so they come in on a separate transportation, but they go home with the students from grades one through four, and one through four begin at 8:20 and leave at 2:55. Our schedules is, we have a daily wind block, and we have a scheduled wind time for grades one through four, where students may receive academic support in ELA and/or math, we also have a ELA block of 75 minutes for reading and writing, we have an alternating science and social studies block that's 30 minutes, and we have our specials, for next year we're gonna focus our specials, we're gonna have focused specials, by that we mean is three specials rotating every 21 days per trimester, all students will be scheduled for wellness, library, computer technology, art, Project Lead the Way, which is the launch program, and music throughout the year, so they're going to receive it, but the only difference is, instead of receiving seven classes once on every seven-day schedule, we're gonna focus so they all have wellness and maybe library, or wellness and computer technology, and wellness and art for a period of time, this allows the teachers in order to really work on their lessons and have a, a continuum as far as the lessons go, instead of being segmented for once every seven days and trying to finish up projects. Our recess is a 30-minute recess, and as you had heard earlier from the food director, the food snack program, we are working in conjunction with the food services director in visiting the Walpole District to view, to review the breakfast exercise book program, which allows that alternative time for breakfast in the school, remember, because many of our students don't come in until 9:15, 9:30, most parents, myself included, may have already given their children a brief breakfast in the morning, and then they're coming in, and they may or may not be hungry at that time, so that gives them that alternative of looking at another time before they are, are ready to go. Our staffing with students is, we are moving from three ESL teachers to four, there's going to be approximately 140 ELL students, and pre-K students will be screened and monitored. Right now, kindergarten is that area that we're never really sure, two years ago or a year ago, we had 18 students this past year, there were 30 students in our ELL program in the kindergarten alone, that is, you're not sure what's going to happen as the, as a year goes through, we are moving our kindergarten from eight sections to seven, and grade one will move from seven sections to eight, our special education, there's a partner classroom, New England Center for Children, and the district is looking at a full-time BCBA that may or may not be housed, although they think may be housed at the elementary What programs have we been working on, we're, you know, going to be in our second year of Eureka Math for grades K-4, second step for grade three, we move that up each year, starting in kindergarten, each year adding a grade for that, we have an ACE curriculum for all the ABA programs, there's a prepaid screener for ESL, that's the idea proficiency test, there's the dial screener for the kindergarten, and we also are looking at it for professional development of math consulting and coaching at one time per month next year. Supplemental programs have been really a large, have a large impact on what's going on at the elementary school, during the wind block is, we're going to be in our second year's Fund for Level Literacy Intervention Program, we will be in our first full year Imagine Learning, we're using it right now, next year will be in our first one, that's our reading program, primarily used for ELL and special education, but we're using it as part of our wind block for all of our students, year two for Systems 44 and Read 180, will be in our first full year of Do the Math, we have it right now, and we're also looking at STE Math, which is a, a really good opportunity for students, and it's a math program that does not have any words into it, so when you take out the words, it gives all students that ability in order to just do the math program. Under emotional behavior, the second step program in grade three, as we said, tier one, we work with zones of regulation, we also have another outside counseling, there's, there's a variety of outside counselors come in, but we went into Worcester, we found some other groups that have come in, and in order to increase the movement throughout the day to meet the diversity of the students, there have been creative movement pathways that are down in the hallways, and those were created by our OT and PT, if you come into the hallways, you're gonna see all kinds of little designs and everything, and kids in any time of the day will be using those movement pathways. Finally, we have some, many after-school programs, we have week-long after-school enrichment programs that have been going on for over six years, or about six years now, these are teacher-run programs in science, math, and the arts, we work in conjunction with the Clinton Parks Recreation who runs three to five programs in the area with us, we have a student-run program for ESL that was brought to us from the CHS, we also have a before and after-school program, and our numbers vary, but right now we're about 45 students in the morning and 65 to 70 students in the afternoon, and those are K-4, actually the K-6 is a few sixth and sixth graders who come down, but not as often, it's minimal by that time period. What kind of activities, they have enrichment programs in science, art, they just got done going to the movie theater for a trip during the last half-day, they use our, they have a computer cart, which they use it, or some Chromebooks, so that has been a very successful program for before and after school. And that's it for this.
So I'll turn it over to the middle school for some quick rundown.
Yes, I actually have my students.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you want all your students to go first, then they can sneak out if they want, yeah.
So I'm not sure if their parents are outside waiting for them, you waited patiently, so I thank you very much, but these are two of our students that have been part of the Project Lead the Way program under the direction of Mrs. DeSessa, so I'm gonna give them a couple minutes to talk about their projects in a very big event that they just attended a couple weeks ago, so go ahead, Izzy, and this is Izzy, and this is Alex.
Thanks for being here. Go ahead.
So, um, we went on, like she said, we went on a field trip to the Peabody S6 Museum, which was really fun, because we presented for about an hour, and then we got to rock around the museum, and then afterwards they give us these cards, what do they call them again? Comic cards, and they give comic cards and see what we should improve, or in what we did really good in, and.
The judges gave you those cards?
Yes.
So you guys went down and you were able to present your robots that you designed in the Project Lead the Way class, right?
Yes.
And then the judges actually looked at, at each of the, each of the robots, and you got some feedback on it, right?
Yes.
And then how did you do?
We did really well, actually.
Yeah, I knew you did really well, so I asked you the question. Do you wanna explain what your robots do, or what they, what they?
Bring them up here, put them on the table.
Can you pick them up? They're pull toys, they're pull toys.
So Alex, you put them right there.
No motors. The challenge was to design a pull toy, an ENT pull toy fashioned after a pull toy that, say, their grandparents maybe played with, or a toy that would be found in a museum, and their restrictions were just using the VEX pieces, and I basically thought what they needed and then stepped back, and it's all there.
So mine is based off a toy from Western Germany, that was like, I think it was 1940 to 1950 that this toy was manufactured, so, yeah, if you wanted, yeah, this is an example.
That's an original?
Yeah.
Okay, love playing with toys, go on.
And, well, on that, they're supposed to shake back and forth, but on here we couldn't replicate it, so instead I put these on, I put these on in front of it, so when this moves, maybe it'll move, which bobbles the head of the toy.
Can you put it on the floor and show us? Let's see this thing.
Wow, it does replicate the movement.
So you use kind of like a bent axle to sort of create that wobble, right?
Yes.
And, and so you went through a design process, I'm assuming, to figure out, trying, so, so what version is this, how many iterations did you go through to get to the point where you, you made it replicate the?
Two times.
Okay.
The first time, the base was like way too big, so we can make it look closer to that, and then the second time, we had to construct your own base, 'cause this is made out of five consecutive plates with side barriers on it, that was our final decision.
So it looks like you really like engineering in the design process.
Yes.
And is, is that a function of your work, like, that, that's because you've had the opportunity to do these things?
Yes.
Do you think you're gonna go into engineering?
It depends.
Do you guys participate in the Lego League as well?
No.
No, you, you thinking about it?
He's recruiting right now.
It's a similar, it's definitely, you know, a similar kind of talent set, you guys obviously have demonstrated that you have some engineering acumen to you, so I think something you might wanna consider.
Terrific.
First, hopefully, because they're eighth graders.
Yeah, or, yeah, or first next year, even better, yeah, yep.
So how did this, how, how, how did yours work?
So mine is a little bit more complicated, it's, well, based off this jacking box over here, that's kinda broken, but you can.
Give Mr. Bailey, he likes.
Alex, you might just come over to this side.
You gotta push it down.
I know how it works, I'll keep it right here.
Okay.
She's not funny yet.
So, it's clown, and me, I worked on it as a team with my friends, Larissa, Tim, and Leonora, really good to be here tonight, but we used, one of the most complicated parts of making this one was, we had to make a way where, when the wheels moved, this would move as well, so that while, as you're pulling it, the head will bob up and down, so, just. We had a first project that we, this was, this is a lot different from the first project that we took to the museum, it was a lot bigger, and it was really unstable and wobbly, because we didn't have any of the side plates that we have now, so it was really kinda bad, and, yes, I don't really know, so.
So you had, so you guys both took the, the robotics course?
Yeah.
Project Lead the Way Robotics, what'd you think of the course?
It was very fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was great.
All right, so that's, they're here, they're here to be our student ambassadors of Project Lead the Way, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
As I mentioned, they got, they got to attend the state, the state conference to present these, and, and from all accounts I've heard that our, our students did very, very well, and especially considering this was a first year for us, Project Lead the Way, so there were schools that have had this program in, in existence for, you know, for multiple years, and, and our students really were able to kinda hold their own, so, so great job.
You guys will definitely be recruited for our first robotics.
Well done, thank you both very much.
I'm sorry for, sorry for making. I'm sorry for, sorry for making you wait longer. Hopefully you learned a little something about the food service program. Yeah, so you can go in.
So Clinton Middle School has also been working very hard to make some changes, adjustments to our schedule for next year. Through my school improvement, school council group, we talked about some concerns we had. Teachers have voiced some concerns with the schedule that we had this year, and trying to align everything, and make it more conducive to time on learning, and more win time. Because this year, we have a combined win. So as I go through my presentation, you'll see how we broke that up as well. So next year, grades five and six, our goal was to give them longer blocks of time. Because this year, they come in, they have a special, they have a class, then they have win. Or they have a class, a special, then win. So mornings for us, we felt we were losing a lot of productive time on learning. So next year, there'll be a hundred and sixty-three minute block, first thing in the morning. So we're two teacher teams, so the A1s might start with humanities in the morning, while the A2s might start with their STEM block in the morning. And those would rotate. So they'll still have a rotation, but just not every period. So the hundred and sixty-three minute block built in there would be a fifth grade win period at the beginning of that block. And then the sixth grade win period would be at the end of that hundred and sixty-three minute block. Then every fifth and sixth grade student would go to their Period Four class, which would now be their special. There'll be six specials that rotate through the year. And then they would come back from their special and go to their hundred and twenty-minute block in the afternoon, which would be opposite of what they had in the morning. Either their STEM or humanities would take place in the afternoon, but then they'd pick it up the next morning. See how that would rotate there? So this would be a typical schedule, just so that you can see it broken down. So the only period, what we're, we're really calling a period, would be their specialist period. And we're calling it Period Four, because that's their lunch recess time as well.
So what's, what's A1 and A2, is that like, the days?
So that's just, this might be, you and I might be a team.
Okay.
And you have A1 in the morning, and you have the humanities teacher.
Okay.
So you start with the A1 kids.
Gotcha.
While I have the opposite group, A2, and I'm the STEM teacher.
Okay.
And then in the afternoons, we would just flip-flop our students.
Okay. So from a time on learning standpoint, it's pretty similar to what they had this year. What it does, though, is, is what Ms. Sargent was alluding to, is it keeps it from being, this year was a little choppy, right? They might have like, you know, forty-five minutes, then they add something else, and they add forty-five minutes again. And, and what we were finding was that was, that was forcing them to kind of...
They're transitioning a lot.
Yeah, so this way, there's not that transition, you're in that humanities group, or you're in that STEM group. And then, and then we can build in, you know, the, the other necessary things in there.
Then for grades seven and eight, they will rotate all but two periods per day. But their full-year classes would be their ELA, math, science, and social studies. So that, that happens every day for all year. Then they're gonna have a term of these classes. So if I'm a seventh grader, I'm gonna have one-third art, then I'll go to one-third Spanish, one-third literacy. If I'm an eighth grader, I'm doing Spanish, literacy, and tech engineering. So I each, I have each of those who won third. So this would be their fifth period, and then their sixth period is their specials. And again, these would be rotating. We're gonna have, grade seven, we're very excited to bring Project Lead the Way App Creator. So we'll have a new hire, because Mrs. Beck will be retiring this year. So the new teacher, we are going to send him out to get trained with the App Creator through Project Lead the Way. Then they'll have health and Phys Ed, which is the wellness program. And then eighth graders, again, with Mrs. De Sessa, but the nice thing, next year is every eighth grader will have the opportunity to have automation and robotics. But then they'll have Phys Ed and Health. And electives for those students that still would like to participate in the new course, those will happen as well. So this is what the rotating schedule would do. So as you can see, we're gonna go to periods, on a day one, period one, two. We, we built in a ten-minute break in the mornings. So that's like a movement break, an opportunity, hopefully, to get downstairs if they haven't had a breakfast, opportunity to go purchase something or bring their own snack. They'll transition at that time to their third-period class. They'll go to period three, four, and five will never rotate. That's the same time that our fifth and sixth graders would be in specials, so we would not have special teachers available for them to rotate into. And then at the end of the day, they'll go to their sixth-period class, which also consists of their sixth-period win. So at the end of the day, seventh and eighth graders will have win. Seventh grade at the beginning of the period, eighth grade at the end of the period, so that we can use our interventionist team separate and move them with the seventh and eighth graders. So this afternoon win would rotate, so they would have every class at the end of the day as an eighty-minute, and get the win remediation that is needed.
One, go ahead. Do the students decide during the WIND block where they go for the help, or is it structured with the teacher? Does the teacher work with them and tell them, you need to go to this and this for win?
So our goal next year is we don't have the opportunity to meet with every teacher
Okay.
throughout that rotation. But if I was absent for, I was out sick for a week, and I need to go back to a certain teacher, there is that flexibility. That's why it's called the win period.
Right, that's the whole...
So kids can move if needed. Some students will come out of there, and they might go to like Systems 44 or Read 180 if I'm a seventh grader next year. They might be pulled to make up a test. All of those things can still happen during that.
Because the purpose of it isn't to be equally distributed. It's supposed to be whatever they're struggling with, right? They're supposed to spend more time on that. So some students will get pulled, might get pulled for reading interventions if they've been identified for that. Special ed services, you know, could be speech, it could be anything like that. Some EL pull-outs could happen at that point, different things like that. So it's supposed to be an opportunity where, and even some of the, you know, ensembles might meet during that time, or band lessons, those types of things. Instrument lessons can meet during that time. So things that are, it's supposed to be basically a time of the day where we're keeping you in a classroom that's gonna rotate around, so you're always, the teacher always has an opportunity to kind of make sure their class is caught up. But if you're pulled for some other need, you're not falling behind. Right. But during WIND block, like, we know where a student should be during a WIND block. It can't be, like, a kid can't decide he wants to go to, you know, whatever he wants, and then, you know, walk around the halls, and the teacher says, what are you doing? He goes, I'm in my WIND block. I'll go wherever I want.
That doesn't happen.
Okay.
I assure you. But the teachers do talk through either email, or they have like a Google...
Doc.
Doc, thank you.
Yeah.
And they communicate that way. So I might say to you, today I need Johnny, Laurie, and Suzie to come back to me.
That's the other part of it, too, is because as a teacher, you need to know how many students you think, if like, all of a sudden thirty kids show up for like extra help for WIND block, you're not gonna be able to...
But I can disperse my students to...
Exactly, right.
Yes, there's a lot of flexibility.
I think one other note on there, and it might come up in a slide, is that combined lunch recess period.
Yes, I'll explain it now, though. So we've built in a thirty-five-minute lunch break. Our goal is to offer students in seventh and eighth grade an opportunity to go to outside first, because the lines are long, and then come in and eat. Or stay out the entire thirty-five minutes, and hopefully we'll put some picnic tables outside, and if they bring their own lunch, they can sit and eat there. For students that really don't like to go outside for recess, the cafeteria would be available for them. And they can stay in there and socialize, whatever they need.
So do you have a plan in place to monitor, to make sure that they're eating, and they're not going without eating?
Yes, so, yes, absolutely. So we'll have staff on duty, and our goal would be that everybody would come in first at the beginning part of the lunch. But if someone's done in fifteen minutes, and we find that students eat pretty quickly, then they would have the opportunity to go right outside. But then there are some kids that come into the cafeteria, and they sit and wait because the lines are so long. So if they want to have the opportunity to get out, take a walk, whatever it is, wait till the lines come down, and then come in. Our goal is everybody comes in and has that opportunity to eat that lunch, yes. Or eat their lunch as they...
More than an opportunity, though, that's gonna be monitored to make sure that...
Yeah, I think we'd start, we'll start everyone in the cafeteria to make sure that, you know, we have an answer of at least, are you eating?
We'll have to get that routine down to, yes, absolutely.
We're, we're monitoring students to make sure that they're eating lunch? Well, we want to make sure that they're, they're, we want to make sure they're just not skipping lunch. Like, they're not sitting there saying like, I want to play flag football with my friends, so I'm just not gonna eat. We're gonna go play flag football for thirty-five minutes. We want to at least bring them down to the, to the cafeteria, and at least kind of, you know, make sure that there's a...
They really need to have something.
But I think, and one of the, one of the benefits of this schedule, the way it's set up with where the specials fall, and where like the lunch recess is, is that there should never be a gym class during that lunch recess block. Which means even if it's like twenty degrees out, and it's February, those seventh and eighth graders can go down to the gym. They're always gonna have the gym as an ability to have like physical activity during the day. It's not gonna be like, we're calling it recess, but they're sitting in a classroom, so.
So we definitely will monitor that lunch, but we also want to provide movement for them as well. It's important.
I like the idea of meeting outside, seriously.
Next year, every grade will be on a trimester. So every thirty days will be a progress report, and on the sixtieth day would be their report card time, just so that that's laid out. This year, we had quarters, half-years, and trimester courses, and it got a little confusing, so we're trying to put everybody on the same schedule. So I kind of already went over this, and this is where that flexible lunch recess period fell in. Things that I do want to bring up, we're gonna reach out to a math consulting company. We have a literacy coach this year, and Alyssa has done an excellent job working with our fifth and sixth grade teachers. We really need some support in the math as well, so we're looking into bringing in a consulting company. So what they would do is, one time per month, they would come in, do some observations in the classrooms, and then meet with the staff and go over, you know, different things. But if I was a teacher who might be struggling with a particular skill or concept, and I want some additional assistance, they're there to support that.
So we, so, so we've met with a consulting company, Moonie Math Consulting, about looking at job-embedded professional development, sort of that coaching, or sometimes maybe a content-based PD on like half-days. We received an initial quote from them, if what it would look like to do the elementary school and the middle school, basically one day a month next year. And what we would do, that would hopefully be something that we would be able to fund out of the Title II A grant, which is teacher quality improvement. So that's, that would be a grant-funded initiative if, if, if we end up being able to pull it all together. But those are our initial conversations. I think one thing that we felt was, with Alyssa in the literacy coach role, she was able to provide support for the literacy, but we didn't really have that math, that corresponding math coach. I mean, Megan, Megan helped, but she was also doing a lot more than just that. So trying to provide some more math support for our teachers as we continue to move forward.
Next, so these are some new things that will be coming to the school. All eighth graders, like I said, will get the Project Lead the Way Automation and Robotics. It went over very well this year, it was well-received. I know Mrs. De Sessa loves what she does, and we would love every student to have the opportunity. Bringing in grade seven, a Project Lead the Way class, which is App Creator. This year, design and modeling was the same thing, more like a pilot-type class, so not every sixth grader had the opportunity to take it. Next year, every sixth grader will have the opportunity, because of the way we're going to, it's gonna be an elective, but it's gonna run so many times during the school year, that our goal would be to get in every student that possibly would like to take it. Grade five, we're going to bring in Launch, which will be done during their win period, so that would be an elective for students. It's a ten-hour course, so it's not like they're, we're taking them away from all the remediation or interventions that are happening for them, but it's an opportunity, and there's different courses in that Launch program. So I technically could, if I was a student who didn't have a lot of interventions, I could technically take the Project Lead the Way Launch a few times during the year, depending on what's being offered. Another new thing next year, we're gonna try to do something similar that the high school does. Every three weeks, we're gonna add a Day Seven, which would be an advisory period, so that we could work on some social-emotional with the students. Each, the teachers will get a binder, there'll be an activity, some discussion, and that would take place. Every student at that time would be in an advisory. And then we're very excited to be bringing in I2 Learning, and I have to say that it was well-received by my staff. So this is, in October twenty-first to the twenty-fifth, Clinton Middle School is gonna have what's called STEM Week. Teachers will be going out this summer for two-day training. So they learn the curriculum, they do the activities, the tasks that they are going to be bringing to their students. So we're doing ecosystems, surgical techniques, lunar colonies, and kinetic sculptures. So each grade level has chosen one of the I2 Learning STEM courses. They'll be trained, and then we'll actually, we'd love for you to come up, we're excited about this. And that one full week, we'll be working on it. And it didn't matter whether you were a music teacher, or you were the science teacher, ELA teacher. It's all adapted curriculum, so that it aligns with you, and it is all aligned with the standards.
And STEM, STEM Week's actually sponsored by the I2 Learning, and the teachers actually, it's a, there's no cost to us for the, the training that the teachers go to. In fact, the teachers actually receive a stipend from I2 for participating in it. So we have, right now, we have very high participation numbers.
Very high, and it keeps growing.
Can I ask you guys a question? With all these, these are great additions.
Yep.
Automation, STEM, have, I know we've talked about it on First in the past, but do you guys have any thoughts? Like, what if, would it, when do you think it would be appropriate to expand, invite eighth graders to also participate in First? I know some districts do that, and in the past, I don't know if it made much sense, but this is, you know, clearly the, it's great the direction that we're going. I know they have the Lego League kind of up and going again for some of the younger groups. And I know we're always trying to think of activities to get kids in the middle school in that will kind of invest them in the district, so that, you know, with the school choice angle on it, that they would want to stay in it. And that just seems like a no-brainer to me. If an eighth grader got invested in First, and got excited about it, and liked the kids on the team, you know, maybe that kid is more likely to go to, stay in Clinton High School, because he wants to stay a part of that program. I know. We might get some feedback this year, maybe, because now we actually have those group of kids that, that were in kind of the pilot run of the robotics and automation. So if we see kind of some of those kids in the first program this coming year. Yeah. See, maybe, or, you know, talk to, talk to the first advisors of those kids coming in, maybe a little more prepared, or with a different skill set now that they've had that course, that maybe, you know, once they've actually been able to, to have those, maybe we do open it up on more of a regular, to anybody, yeah. Right, yeah, I mean, the only thing I can think of is we might, if we do that, we might want to ask somebody, a teacher from the middle school to be a part of the mentoring team, because they would have a relationship with those, with, with those kids. But I just, I know it's something we've talked about in the past, and just like seeing this just kind of triggered it again with me. It's like, you know, maybe it's, it's getting toward that time where we start thinking about, about doing something like that, that's all.
A good group to really look at doing it with would be in a couple of years, because our sixth graders have just completed Design and Modeling. And App Creator next year, then they'll go into Automation and Robotics.
So you have a cohort that completed the entire Project Lead the Way Gateway program, yeah?
Yeah.
Just some school-related activities that continue. Our PPAS program continues to be very successful. Students love earning their voucher deal tickets. We just had, this past Friday night, our first lip sync event, it was a lot of fun. Math night we had this year, we're gonna continue to keep that going. Our steam fair, Wednesday, May twenty-second, it's gonna be there. We've also turned that into an open house, so Project Lead the Way will be there, Banker Space will be there, so lots of different sciences. We're also including Step Up Night, so we're inviting in fourth-grade families, parents, to Clinton Middle School to see what...
Have you guys reached out to Paul, the digital media group, to see if they can get some kids there that night?
Yes.
Okay, great.
We have nature's classroom continuing next year for grade six and Washington DC for grade eight.
Let me read this one, this one thing you don't have in, my, I actually got a big kick out of it. I actually, and I don't probably, I don't know the term you guys use, but you had this thing a couple of weeks ago where they, they had like three, like bracelets or something. If they basically didn't disturb the class all day, yeah.
Seventh grade fundraiser, they did silence for a day.
Thank you, I couldn't think of this.
It was amazing. So students in the morning, it was a fundraiser for seventh grade for their upcoming field trip. So they could buy wristbands in case they talked. So they could turn in a wristband and it would be considered okay.
Like buying mulligans?
Yes.
Yes. So it was very successful. The kids loved it. And the goal was to see how many wristbands you could have at the end of the day. So every student got one, but they didn't know they were going to get one. So lots of, some students bought ten.
Believe me.
And some students bought two. Because they knew that they could make the day, but they were kind of contributing to the fundraiser. I happened to do some observations upstairs in the seventh grade that day and was trying to get students even to talk to me in the hallway. They wouldn't, they would just go. Like telling me, you know, you can't talk. But they could talk in the classroom if they were asked a question. They could definitely respond and if they had a question, you know, in regards to what was happening, they could ask it. But they couldn't just turn around and talk in the hall.
So the bracelets, the bracelets were like the.
Loved it.
Yeah, well then if you have a bracelet left, you got extra recess or something, right? Yeah, they got something at the end.
If you ended up with bracelets at the end of the day, you got to go down to the gym for like twenty minutes of extra downtime. And then you could talk. And then extracurricular, we continued, we brought back the Lego League.
That's great.
We'll have it again next year because I have a seventh grade science teacher along with our computer tech person that's very interested in running it. We have our PGIS Student Ambassador Program, Student Council. Sports, which this year for some of our sports programs, sixth graders, there were waivers, so sixth graders were able to play. Steam for Girls continues to run very strong, seventh and eighth grade girls. And Mr. Seed's second year of real mentors.
Second.
Second full year of real mentors. And that's a program for boys, grade seven and eight, and they meet on Wednesdays. Two gentlemen from out of district approached Mr. Seed and Mrs. Bailey and it's been very successful for us.
And they've presented. All right.
I just have a quick question, Mrs. Sergeant. So how does this get communicated to the parents so that the parents are, are going to be aware of these changes for next year?
How do we communicate the schedule changes?
We'll send with the report cards at the end of the year. We'll also have stuff on display at the open house on next Wednesday evening.
Because that was one of the concerns from last year is.
Well, yeah, I was just, right. So it, as far as band goes, are they going to be, they have a separate special period for band? Or are they being taken out of a classroom for band?
So that we try not to take them out of academic like math, ELA, reading or science. We try to look at specials and we try to look at maybe possibly a social studies in the win period.
Oh, okay.
So this year, this year there was, there were some students who probably were pulled out of like some history classes and stuff because sort of the way we had the schedule, Ms. Quist had kind of a large teaching load. So it hindered her, some of the, some of the times that were more opportune for her to pull kids out in the past, she wasn't able to do that. So we've, we've tweaked that so that, we're hoping that's not an issue between the additional win blocks and the fact that Ms. Quist won't be, will have access to those kids during their specials. That we should be able to, it should be more like it was in previous years.
Oh, good, good.
And maybe a little more successful too with four different win periods, which opens up some extra time.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the high school, this all sounds familiar, but a month and a half ago I spoke to you about the program of studies. This is program study. So if you heard, if you were listening that night, if you weren't, you're going to get it this time. So what's happening, these are the new additions to Clinton High School. The Chromebook, one-on-one Chromebook for our incoming ninth graders. We have new technology courses. We have now moved up into a second level, a new level of, a new implementation of a French II. Creative writing, which of course we talked about, I think that had a program of studies that was wanting to be able to run and it looks like it will be. We now will be running a honors stats and probability. And algebra concepts is a new class we've been running. A honors US History II as well as the, the openness now to the open, for registration for AP US History for the juniors, which did not have in the past. And a new approach to inclusion, but I'm just mentioning that at Clinton High School because it is very important, but. Someone else is going to talk about that, especially that. So all ninth graders will receive a Chromebook. They will be using one for all their core courses. Staff will be trained in utilizing Chromebook. That took place last, this past Friday here in the, in the library. Chromebooks will complement other methodologies and instruction, research, writing and assessing. So we are fortunate now this year to introduce the fact that all incoming ninth graders will be receiving a Chromebook. They will have the Chromebook for the next four years. And the year after that, the incoming ninth graders will have Chromebooks, et cetera, et cetera. So in a few years, all of our students will have a Chromebook to use one-on-one. Now, the staff was trained this past Friday here, so they felt a lot more comfortable, I think, afterwards. And it shows some of the, the way to utilize that. And it's very important to understand because, you know, it will complement other methodology. It's not the only tool that will be used, but it is used to supplement and complement our present teaching ways and also to go completely, to try to go paperless. Now, this has, as you, as you talk about other courses in this, the new edition of courses at Clinton High School, it keeps coming back to the fact how valuable these Chromebooks will be. And I'm going to move right to the next one to show you an example of that. One of the, is the new technology course, which is going to be, I, I don't really need to read all of this. Okay, but basically what we're doing is with the new technology course, as has been mentioned several times, the Engineering the Future course, which we've had here for probably the last fourteen, fifteen years, has now, will now be changed. We are no longer using that for the MCAS Science Technology, MCAS test assessment. We will, we have introduced now, we'll place a physical science, we have an introduction to physics. That's what the ninth graders will be tested on for MCAS, the ninth grade. At the same time, we are calling all students to, all freshmen as, to take the, the new, it's called the Engineering Innovation as opposed to the former Engineering the Future. It is a focus on different tools, different projects, hands-on with different materials and the latest technology to use in the classroom. So it's a more relaxed, in a sense, there's not the pressure of the MCAS on this for the students, but it does follow the frameworks of an engineering course for the ninth grade. So that's something, and again, using the one-on-one, the Chromebooks are going to be advantageous for this course as well. So that's our new engineering course. The other courses are the French II, we'll now be moving into a French II. And we will now offer a, two sections of French I. So I know that I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, we had Evan Kilipin, patting him on the back for the great job he's done. And he just, he's taken that program, was just running Spanish, that's all in our foreign language course, program. Numbers are great for the French II and also our numbers for the incoming ninth graders and interested present ninth graders for French I have now, we're going to offer two sections of that.
Is there one section of French II next year?
One section of French, I'm sorry.
No, that's my fault because I added that, I added that bullet to, so I did it at the wrong spot, yeah.
That's good to know.
I hit enter there and I shouldn't have, so sorry.
The creative writing, remember we talked about that and we talked about some of the electives. At the time of the program of studies, we, we talked about two or three different possible electives in that department. One was journalism. This seems to be the one that the department would like to offer, creative writing. Looking at different genres, poetry, literature and using that as a guide and then implementing their own creative writing through, not necessarily, they're so used to doing a lot of that and standardized testing, but more of a free creativity in writing. So the, the department is still working on it, but they have it pretty much laid out. And hopefully that'll be something that's going to be very advantage, advantageous. The algebra concepts, up until now, a student did not do well in the eighth grade or even as his or her freshman year below a seventy in Algebra I with the fear of MCAS coming around the corner. We were offering an Algebra I-A course. So we decided that's not working, it's, it's, it's not good, it's a repetition in a sense. So we implemented this algebra concepts. It will be the same curriculum of the Algebra I. The pacing may be different, but the curriculum will be the same. So it's a new course, it's a course for those who are probably not at the same, let's say, pace of a, of a, of a college prep, but this will be an Algebra I course. Honor Statistics, that's depending on our numbers right now. Right now we have a college prep statistic class and we have a, an AP stats. So this is going something in between and the numbers are going to determine whether this runs or not, okay? Because we need to balance those off and this is an option. The honors US History II, in the past we made it once or twice. And because what happens at the high school is so many of those students who are in the honors level, the AP level, they got stuck into just a certain amount of slots of courses and there's not a lot of freedom. We're not Rock 'n' High, you know, with four hundred teachers or something like that. We, students get sort of locked into certain courses. And at the time we tried that US History, honors US History and they were not, you know, you'd have five kids in the honors US and twenty-eight in the CP, so it didn't work out there. This way, offering this now and also allowing juniors to take AP US History. In the past, you've had to have US History I, a US History II and then, then you take the AP. Now, Department of Ed has allowed juniors to go from a US History I into an AP. So that's advantageous to us as well. So the numbers look fine on that and it's a great opportunity.
Go, hit the up arrow. Did I miss one?
No.
I know, I was like, I see.
If you're missing one, you can blame it on me, that means I didn't clap you there.
Chromebooks, we were talking about, I wanted to go back because one of the things that was, I know I was concerned and I worked on this. And the Chromebooks also, you know, I wanted to make a point that for the ELLs, you know, these, these new Chromebooks are also something that can be very advantageous as well. The writing style, you know, all the different bells and whistles, so to speak, that go with them, the Gizmo, Google Classroom, Google Docs. And even the ELLs, there's an access to a mentor text and their writing, their shared writing are something that, you know, someone in an ELL program would really benefit from. So that was my point beginning about how it just keeps coming back, the, the advantage of the, of the Chromebooks as well. So that's what I wanted to get back, I'm just, sorry, I missed that. Okay, and then, oops, sorry, right there. I know someone had asked about numbers for the high school a couple of weeks ago at, at this meeting. And these, these are the average class size in these areas right now. May thirteenth, it's still difficult to say exact numbers for high school classes. We're still working on the master schedule, things are still falling in place. But I know that someone in the board, the committee had asked about this. So if we were to take a ballpark figure right now for our college prep and honors together in these, you know, in the core courses, an average of science, twenty-two students, which is good because you do not want a lot of students in a lab, you know, with a Bunsen burner or something like that going on, so for safety reasons. History is, always seems to be big numbers, but as I mentioned, offering the honors, the AP, that is usually many, many times here, our history courses are twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight. So right now, there's twenty-five students. Our average ELL students, running, we have two different teachers here, about twelve students. Our math, our twenty-three students and the average right now, and the ELA of twenty-two students as well. Again, those fluctuate, they change. I mean, last year between mid-August and the second week of September, I think we had thirty-five students come into this building. You know, so the numbers change. So right now, those are the average class sizes for next year. So these are the courses we're offering. I think that they're exciting. Finally, you know, a, a new ELA elective, a second language is created, it's growing. And I think the Chromebooks are something that we just can't stop talking about. That's really something very, and the details of that, you know, could be explained as far as students maintaining it and their responsibility and all of that would be something that, you know, is being developed. That's what we offer.
All right, thanks. Loretta, you want to go through the, oh, you got, you got a whole team?
So the Office of People's Services and Personnel really is made up of four domains. When you look at this office, I'm the Director of People's Services and Personnel. Kathy oversees special education at the high school level. Mr. Hastings is the liaison for homeless children in New York. And Ms. Blanca Russo is the ELL coordinator. So with the English Language Learners, we know that we have a new law, it's called the Look Act, which mandates that schools that have Ls of over one hundred students or at least five percent of their population need to now have a parent advisory. So in response to that, on June fourth, we'll be having a kickoff meeting where we'll be inviting families to come in. I'll be talking to them about what parent advisory looks like. Hopefully forming a committee to begin to work on bylaws. The other piece of the Look Act are the SEI endorsements for educators. And so when we had our review, we do have some educators who do require that endorsement. And so a way to make it a little bit more easier for them to participate in that course, we'll be testing it here in the district in the fall and we have thirty seats available. I think the biggest thing that comes with the Look Act are what we call benchmarks. And it's almost beginning to look a lot like special education with objectives and goals and who's reaching those benchmarks. And for students who are not needing benchmarks, having success plans put in place, which is mandated by DESI. And the way we're going to operate that is through what we already have in our ICAST system. So that's a summer project that we'll be working on for these success plans. We're also looking at our curriculum, the Imagine Learning and the STNAV and also increasing a full-time position at the elementary school. With our McKinney-Vento students, these are our homeless students. Right now in the district, we have about fifteen homeless students that are on record that we know of. The majority of those students are in the sixth and seventh grades or lower. And then we also have the unaccompanied youth piece as well, which is where we have students who do not have an adult and in those cases, that can be a bit tricky, especially if it's a student also with a disability and having someone be appointed as their educational representative.
This year we held the preschool lottery on March fourth and that picture is, that's my hand there and on the table. And Mr. Rulo is holding the box with all the different numbers in them. And our integrated preschool, of course, is at the elementary school and this program exists. exists because of our students with disabilities, because we are required to have a program for children ages three to five, and we hold the lottery for our non-disabled peers and our peer role models for the students with disabilities, and we held that lottery on March fourth, and that is us doing, actually doing the lottery. It was a very painless process, we just picked out the numbers and we write them down, and then we call the parents and say, you are this number on the waiting list or on the list, and we tell them whether their child is coming morning or afternoon, and it goes from there.
Were you able to, we didn't have anyone left out, though, right? When it came time?
Everyone was offered a slot, it just might not have been their first choice.
Okay, yeah, perfect.
This year, we held six hundred and fourteen Special Ed Team meetings, one hundred and sixty-four of them were initial meetings, so those are kids who were put in the referral process, either through the student support team system or by their parents. We also had thirty-four other meetings, which means that the team was reconvened for some reason that either a parent asked for a reconvene, or a teacher asked for a reconvene because there was a problem. But for our other students, we held two hundred and twenty-three annual review meetings and a hundred and ninety-three reevaluation meetings. We have four hundred and sixteen Special Ed students in the district. Out of our Special Education students, I was getting a ton of emails on the Special Ed Directors listserv, because people were concerned about the number of students in their districts with the disability neurological, and I'm pleased to report that we only have seven percent of our population with that disability, whereas some of the Special Ed Directors were reporting up to twenty-nine percent. We only have seven percent, so we're well below the state average in that area. However, our autism population has grown exponentially, which is why we have those wonderful NEC programs at the elementary school. Our current autism population is at seventeen percent. Our kids with communication disabilities is at twelve percent, kids with developmental delays at eighteen percent, our kids with emotional disabilities are at eight percent, health, which is primarily ADHD, is at eighteen percent. We only have seven students in the district with intellectual impairments, we have one student with a multiple disability, multiple disabilities, which is point two four percent, one student with a physical disability at point two percent, sensor of hearing, which is usually a student with deaf, we only have three of those, three students with vision impairments, and sixty-four students who have specific learning disabilities, all about four hundred and sixteen students.
So, with looking at the disability categories and the percentages, for next year, the focus will be on really defining specialized instruction within the Special Education Continuum of Services. Really looking at the early education and care, learning standards that have come out, looking at how we do our support with our Special Education teachers within the classroom through inclusion, what is happening in small group instruction, our TLC therapeutic classrooms, which you may know as FOCUS, really looking at that continuum, and really having the objective of students in those programs really developing fortitude, it's kind of a common theme in all of those classes. We have our NEC partner cooperative in our supported classroom at the elementary. As we graduate up into the middle school, that morphs really more into what we call a pragmatic learning classroom. And at the high school, that continues to be an area that I would like to look at and develop further at the high school level. The NEC programs, for some students, that may morph at the middle school into more of a life skills program, that functional academic and adaptive living opportunities. And so, for next year, what we're looking at is trying to look at opportunities where we can get our students out into the community to have more authentic experiential learning. And to continue that again at the high school, we'll even take it a little bit further and offer them opportunities for internships, again, making the learning really authentic. Then we have what has been referred to as resource rooms, and part of my task this year has really been to look to see what is happening in a resource room, can somebody define the entrance criteria, the exit criteria, what is the profile of the student? And that is something that I've asked the teachers to really think about this year. And what we came up with was, these are really students who need language-based techniques, we're really talking about kids who have serious dyslexia. And so, really looking at the essentials of the curriculum with the language-based techniques in a small group setting, and we see that across the district. So, how does all of that come into play? Well, it takes a lot of communication, a lot of communication district-wide. So, what we did this year was, we held a mega-meeting, and that was really to bring pre-K all the way up to teachers at the high school, together to have conversations about how we vertically articulate the needs of our students. So, for Special Ed students, for a teacher, rather than just seeing a roster in September, they had an opportunity to sit down with the teacher who has that student currently, and really learn the nuances of that child's learning style. We also really celebrated a lot of wonderful student achievement this year, and we'll continue to do this again next year. Right now, at the high school, Diane, Suzanne, Lauren King, Merrily, and Kim and Cindy have had amazing success stories and student achievement that they've really celebrated this year. We saw this again at the middle school with Meg, Laurie, and Candace, and Kate, and Julia, students who, one particular student had increased his reading by fifty percent, and his reading levels improved from a K level to a maximum grade level of third grade. And again, continuing to, you know, celebrate the good things that have been happening, Kim Ryan, Sam Kenyon, Maria Johnson, Emily Lee, Melanie Robinson, and Nicole Parker, and Chin and Riley, of course, all had wonderful accolades and success stories. And in fact, for Shannon's program, students who have never been included in Janet's programs currently all have opportunities to be included in the core classrooms. And then, of course, the English Language Learners, Eloa and Kate Warren had wonderful stories, as well as Ingrid and Blanca, just amazing things that our ELL students are achieving and coming to understand as they've acclimated into our district. And then there's the Royal Service Provider, and Chin, I don't know if there's a way to show the little clip from that, I know Mr. Rulo had spoken about the pathways, maybe not?
I just need permission.
Oh, okay, oh, wow. But basically, that kind of just came out of the day where we were starting to notice that we had some kids in the younger grades who just kind of had the wiggles and needed to move, and we figured, you know, we have kids who are having to transition to different classes for different reasons and pull out services, let's create that as an opportunity for movement rate and brain breaks. And so, Meg, and Kayla, and Caitlin, and Joyce France put together these wonderful pathways. Kayla?
Ten CPAC meetings were held throughout the year, where topics, discussions, and presentations focused on anxiety, basic health, autism, ABA, the R, and parent support. Through fundraising, we raised six hundred and twenty-four dollars earmarked for the Sean Hazel Scholarship Award. Due to our fundraising and generous donations from the Hazel family, two scholarships will be awarded at this year's graduation. Next year, it is expected that two scholarships will also be awarded, and I am the chair, Michelle Watson is the vice chair, this year, I'm the secretary, and Amy Bishop is our coordinator. And so, next year, we'll continue to plan our relationships with that thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, I have just one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
You talked about an ELL Parent Advisory Council, what's the, it just sounds very similar to the position that we talked about earlier, the Family Outreach Coordinator position?
So, the Family Outreach Coordinator might be like our liaison to the English Language Parent Advisory Council.
Okay.
So, the Parent Advisory Council would be kind of like the CPAC, where there's like, it's a group of parents that come together to support each other.
Oh, okay.
It should be a parent advisory council, so it would be a group of English-speaking parents, and then one of the things would be that, you know, no matter what other administrators might attend, the Family Outreach Coordinator would be able to help be like our liaison to make sure we're all communicating well and supporting our English-speaking population.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good, I was just wondering what that dynamic was, thank you.
All right. My strategy is if I just make all the present, if I drag out the presentation for like half an hour, you guys don't have many questions.
Please say this wasn't part of an overall strategy.
No. All right, so if you guys don't have any questions, I can move on to the next part?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, thank you for everyone who presented.
Thank you everyone who presented, very informative.
So, the next part, hopefully pretty quick here for updates. Cheerleaders, I know there was already mentioned that they were very successful and won their national competition there, so they're national invitational champs. We are working on ordering, working with the boosters, we're gonna get them, I think, some sort of jackets or something, and also, we're looking at getting them the, those plaques made, similar to what we do for like, Super Bowl winning teams, that type of stuff, so that we could have that. The CHS principal search has come to a conclusion, so, I think he's here somewhere, was. Mr. Sarmak has been appointed as the new principal for Clayton High School, so he'll be taking over.
Does he have a transition plan?
Yeah, can you give a quick transition plan for us?
I don't think he's here.
Yeah, he's here.
We'll get, we'll get one of those, but not tonight. The Human Resource Director update, so that's the human resource position for the combination town and, you know, the townwide human resource position. I know that I serve on that, I'll be one of the, I guess, final hiring authorities with Mike Ward, and Joel and Tina were on the search committee, so, and the search committee has essentially kind of concluded their work and recommended names to move forward to Mr. Ward and I, and we're working on trying to reach out to those recommended names for, try to wrap up next week, or, you know, go on the next step next week, so. I don't know if you have any more to comment on that, or is that all right, or just?
Yeah, no, I think the, you know, it was a comprehensive search committee represented, you know, different aspects of the municipal and municipal departments, and I thought it was a pretty thorough process.
The District Environment Committee numbers, so, in your packet, there's a pretty lengthy section on, it's the survey responses, so we did the welcoming environment survey. We had a hundred and fifty-nine responses to the English survey, we had two responses to the Spanish survey, three responses to the Portuguese survey, so we had a total of, let me do my math there again, yep, one hundred and sixty-four responses. What I did, that very first page is just kind of a summary, when we, we actually had a very productive meeting where the members of this committee went, and we actually sat through and looked at all of the open response questions, and we did a coding process, and we went through in teams and just coded to find emerging themes, and then tried to capture those themes, and then we basically looked at the themes across questions and tried to come up with the overarching themes, or which could potentially lead themselves to goals. One thing that came up was improving communication, all of it was by setting and enforcing clear expectations. So, it basically, I think the survey showed us that there were pockets, there were some people who felt that there were good examples of communication, but there were, but overall, I think it was inconsistent, which is not something that is, you know, that I've never heard before, right? So, we're working on trying to look at those consistencies, including consistent methods, you know, with the second one there be is things like different types of apps or software that the teachers are using, trying to get it more consistent and approved, so that, you know, not saying every teacher has to do exactly the same thing, but at least if we have a kind of a set menu, that you kind of know you're gonna do something from, because right now, there's just a wide variety on that. Fostering a comment, a climate of inclusiveness, you know, there were a couple people who, you know, talked about things such as, you know, feeling that some students weren't treated fairly based on, you know, the relationship they might have, that, you know, there were some people who mentioned some concerns about how they felt their students were treated with special needs, and there were a couple surveys that responded and shared instances of where they felt they were victims of bias or discrimination, so, I mean, I wouldn't say that that was a, those weren't necessarily overwhelming responses, but they were, they were responses, so if it's a snapshot of our, you know, we're looking at a small sample size, the fact that there were any of them of those are concerns, right? So, we want to make sure that we're focusing on that, that climate of inclusiveness. In general, creating more of a customer service mentality is kind of how we captured that, just basically working on that, you know, that primary interaction between the public and the school. Everything from how do you drop your kid off, you know, when you walk in the office, how are you greeted, you know, things like, you know, if you, not everyone knows necessarily how to get their kid dismissed, so what's the right way, so that they're not, you know, creating any type of issue. Physical environment, the efficiencies of the middle school, this is some general talks about regular building maintenance and upkeep, cleaning the floors, and talks about some references to like flowers and shrubs and stuff around the grounds. And then, safety and security, I think there were people that buzz in process and procedures. Particularly, I think one of the things that came up a lot was the idea that the way our buildings are structured right now, which is fairly common in a lot of buildings, is that kind of, once we buzz you in the door, there's not really, there's nothing that necessarily forces you to like go into the office, right? So, if you kind of made it through the first door, you could just kind of walk into the building. And I'd say, it's not, that's not, I've seen buildings that are built, so that's not possible, but I wouldn't say that that's the norm in most schools, but looking at things, and we're talking, we even talked about some ideas, you know, is that, do we need the little like, you know, the lines, the little things they have at like a movie theater or something to just kind of mark it off, so you kind of have to go that way or something like that? There you go. So, that's sort of, you know, that's the summary, that's kind of what we came up with with our, with our, as we coded the data and looked at a lot, most of the free responses. Then, behind it is really just each question-by-question answer, so you can look and literally see, you know, most of our respondents, ninety, almost ninety-two percent of them classify themselves as a, as a parent or guardian of a current student, you know, the breakup by, you know, what school do you have the most connection is fairly consistent with sort of our enrollment, so you would, you would kind of expected that pattern. And I don't, you know, there's twenty-four questions, I'm not gonna go question by question, and we had the summary there, but I wanted to share that data with you, you know, I think we, we did the survey, I think we got a lot of, a lot of valuable things. I think there's some credible things to this survey, for example, you know, when you look at, there are questions here, pages, so on question like nine, eight, nine, and ten, they have you, you know, how would you, rate the welcoming, rate how welcoming you find the physical environment of each school. So, if you look at the elementary school, the average was like an eight point one eight, the high school was a seven point seven three, but the middle school was like a five point four one. So, you know, and that's really a comment on the, on the building, I think we could have predicted that result, but by looking at those questions and seeing that that prediction came true, kind of helps us validate the data, in the sense that, you know, people weren't just blindly going through and saying like, one, 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 or ten, 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 like, you know, there's some, there's some validity to our data, sort of like an internal control method there, so. So, I think, you know, I think we got a good sample size. Some of the other things, though, when you say like, you know, what's your overall satisfaction with the level of communication you receive from the district level? Well, the average was a seven point six three. Well, we don't really know what a seven point six three means necessarily right now, but what we have is, at least we have a baseline. So, now, we can have some goals, we can work on different things, and hopefully, the next time we do the survey, we get higher than a seven point six three, not lower, you know, so I think some of those things, but I would, you know, I'd rather have a seven than a, yeah, than a two, right, so. So, I think, so overall, you know, I think that the survey, you know, So overall, you know, I think that the survey, you know, helped us get some valuable information. Some of it might have helped confirm some things we suspected anyway, but I think it's good to at least have the data to back that up and some direction here for some goals.
Well, I, you know, I mean, you can't identify areas where you want to be better unless you ask the question. So I think there's value in just putting it out there to begin with.
So any other questions or comments?
Any questions on the survey?
Okay. The next thing I had was facilities walkthrough. Just remember, a couple months ago, we talked about trying to do one maybe before the summer. I think, I think, Bernie, you might have kind of done one on your own, right? And then you kind of communicated that. Tina, I know, did one with Russ. Her summary of findings is in here. So it's just kind of a reminder, if you want to do, you know, your walkthrough prior to the end of the year, just so that they have maybe an opportunity to try to address some things over the summer, you know, we can try to schedule that with Russ, whatever fits in with your schedule. And then we'll, obviously, we'll do them again, you know, before the start of school or something like that. And then the last thing I had up here was just end-of-year reminders, so just specifically, you know, just clarifying some things. NHS induction. Joel, I think you said you're... Are you speaking at NHS? No, you know, we don't... You guys don't have to speak at NHS. You're speaking at the adult graduation.
I believe the adult ed...
Yep.
CNS and CUS graduations.
Yeah, so you'll be... Yeah. Yeah, you said.
Yeah.
So he'll be speaking at... He's going to speak at three.
At least.
Yeah. So NHS inductions, that's just tomorrow, so you guys can... If you can make it, I don't think... You don't have to speak to that one. Fifth-year class reunion, we do have to RCP to that, so if you're going, or if you're going and bringing someone, we want to make sure you let Mary know as soon as you can.
And can you let us know at the end of the meeting if you haven't heard from any one of us about that?
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Scholarship committee. So that's scheduled right now for the 23rd at 6:00. Tina, I think maybe you had a conflict with that?
Yeah, I can't do 6:00.
And I know they couldn't push it to 7:00 because then it's scheduled at 6:00 because there's a concert and stuff, but it's at 7:00.
And the night before is the adult ed graduation.
So I don't know if anyone could be as... Serve as the school committee rep for the scholarship committee on the 23rd at 6 o'clock.
I can let you know off the check. I'll get back to you.
Okay. Do we... We can just send out a... We can reach out for like a reminder email or something?
I'll email you automatically.
Okay.
I don't mind going over all the applications, and I usually do up an Excel spreadsheet that whoever wants to be the rep that night could take with them.
Yeah, I'll let you know as quick.
Okay.
Okay. So you could almost do what you normally do and then just sort of send a liaison, a delegate.
I just got to sit there and put my hand up.
Pretty much.
And then the last kind of update, end-of-year reminder thing I want to talk about is the Memorial Day Parade. I know last year, we walked in the Memorial Day Parade. We have a banner. I even have some pencils again, so I didn't know if we were still intending on walking in the parade. I'm fine with it. I figured we were, but I don't think we really discussed it as a board, so I didn't know if you... How you guys felt on that?
I'm in. I'm fine to do it.
I'm fine.
Okay. All right. I'll bring the banner and the pencils. See you there.
Great.
We're ready for...
Yep, go ahead.
So I wasn't able to attend the curriculum committee meeting, but I think, you know, we heard a lot of...
That's pretty much what the meeting was, yeah.
Right. That's been going on there. Anything from the safety committee?
No, we haven't met since last meeting.
Anything from marketing?
No, we had our goals meeting, but we haven't met since then, so...
Okay. So in your packets, you have several policies that, in compliance with state health groups, we have to review the end, so what I would suggest we do, and you got these in your packet when Mary put the packet together Friday, is the language hasn't changed in any of these policies that we have previously read, read and adopted, and reviewed. For compliance purposes, we have to approve them, review them every two years or so. So what I would suggest, though, is, in our best interest, is if you look at policy EBV1 around life-threatening allergies, there's a policy statement that we've already passed. But in the policy, it directs the school district with guidance from the Department of Ed, nurse leader, or her designate, and individual school nurses to develop and implement procedures that are appropriate to each school and which I think is the right way to go. But then, if you look at EBV1A, there are procedures that I don't think... We can certainly acknowledge these. I just don't think it's in... It should be moving forward in our purview to approve the procedures part of the policy, especially in cases where we've directed members of the school district to develop those procedures. I don't know if that makes sense to everyone, but, you know, as far as the policy, we've directed people in the policy to create the procedures. I just don't think it's in our best interest, short or long term, to be in the business of creating procedures. So I would ask for a motion to approve EBV1, and then, you know, we can direct the policy subcommittee to take a look at some of these procedural things that fall beneath the policy to sort of pull them out. If that makes sense.
So I think when we met as the policy committee, there were six policies that we were basically comfortable saying it would be...
And you have them in your agenda.
You have them in your agenda.
EBV1...
Yeah. The first one in each row there.
Yeah, in the column.
Yeah, the first column, exactly.
Down to JLCD. So it's EBV1, EBBC, JL1A, JL1B, JLBA, and JLCD, and, you know, it's the recommendation that's...
From the nurses and the school physician and all that stuff, so...
That we move forward in...
Approving was reviewed, yeah.
Knowing them as as reviewed. And I would suggest that the subsequent policies, EBBC1, EBBC1A, EBBC1B, really fall more under procedures, and I think it would probably be best that we pull those out of the policy handbook.
And then the opioid overdose program one was just very... There was a lot thrown in there, so we were going to hold on that one, take no action.
The first part is policy, but then I think there's some stuff that we probably need to clean up that doesn't really belong in a policy handbook.
So basically, you know, if we were to follow the recommendations of the policy subcommittee, it would be to do probably two motions. One motion to approve essentially that first column of those six policies, and then one other motion to probably remove the four in the other, in basically columns two through four, those four other policies, just to remove them since they're essentially procedures.
And not... And do nothing on the last one.
And the last one, we're just going to hold, yeah. We don't need to take any action on it. It's still there as it is, but policy subcommittee, yeah.
Would anyone like to make a motion to recognize those policies as reviewed?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
I was waiting. Waited me out.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor? Thank you.
Those are reviewed.
Can we have a motion to keep enforced for the school district, but to remove from our policy handbook the procedural policies in columns two, three, and four?
I'll make that motion.
If you look at the agenda. Just these...
I think we lost it at 9:00.
Okay. They really don't fall under policies. They're really more procedures.
Yep.
Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I think...
Okay. It's already been made, sorry.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? There being none. All those in favor? Thank you. And we don't... We'll...
We'll hold on the opioid one until...
Take up the opioid overdose program policy and procedures at a later date. Anything under old business?
Dr. Meyer, can you make a note for the next meeting? Can we get an update on the athletic survey?
Yep.
I know you guys have been busy with the...
Yeah, I'm meeting with... I actually have a meeting scheduled with John on Friday. So I don't think we've actually distributed it yet, so we'll distribute it. When I meet with John on Friday, that was on my agenda to make sure we get that out now, so we capture it, not the end of the year. Capture everybody and get that feedback so we have it before the fall.
I'd like him to be able to use that. It might be too late for some sports already, but it's fair enough to be able to use that as part of his evaluation.
Yep. So I mean, like I said, I have a meeting already with John on Friday.
Okay.
And that's one of the agenda items.
Anything else in our old business? Anything in our new business?
I have some letters I'd like to just share.
Sure.
So we have some retirement letters. I can... I have four letters, and if they're okay, I'll just... I'll read them to you quickly.
Sure.
First one's from Donna Beck. It says, Dear Dr. Meyer, this letter is my official notification to you. My last school year at Clinton Public Schools will be the end of this school year, June 2019. I have mixed feelings about my impending retirement, 36 years, but wanted to take this opportunity to thank you, past superintendents, administrators, my colleagues in the school committee, for all the opportunities I've experienced working in such an excellent school system. I have genuinely enjoyed my employment as a typing, computer, math teacher, instructional technology specialist, district mentor, teacher mentor, web coordinator, and miss all of you when my retirement day comes. I have so many great memories. I've been fortunate to have accomplished many career goals. I only hope to have touched the lives of all the students who I've taught over the years as much as they have touched mine. And sincerely, Donna Beck. I have another retirement letter from Sharon Collins. Dear Dr. Meyer, School Committee and Mr. Hastings, please accept this letter as notification of my retirement from the Clinton Public School District. I will retire at the end of this school... At the end of this school year with feelings of sadness and joy. I know that I will truly miss the staff and students since they have been such a huge part of my life over the last 25 years. I consider it a true privilege to teach in such a warm, caring place. The students and staff are so lucky to have the experiences of generous and warm-hearted interactions with each other. I will always consider Clinton students to be the best anywhere, always polite, helpful, and well-behaved. I will never forget the amazing graduations spoken in three languages, the thousands of dollars donated to many students, the prams, the pies, and many sporting events. The high school has been a place of enormous growth and friendships, and I appreciate having been given the chance to teach Clinton students all these years. Sincerely and respectfully, Sharon Collins. The next one is from Ed Howard. Dear Dr. Meyer, I'm writing this letter to inform you that I will be retiring from my current position as technology teacher at Clinton High School. My last day of work will be June 12th, and my resignation will become effective at the end of the 1819 school year. I've already informed Principal Hastings and my department head, Paul Morrison, of my intentions of working closely with them to make this a smooth transition. I would like to thank you and the Clinton Public School District for making this a very rewarding and enjoyable 14 years. I look forward to continuing my association with the district and other capacities. Sincerely, Ed Howard. And the last one from Maureen O'Laughlin. Dear Dr. Myers, with mixed feelings, I submit this letter of retirement to you. After 20 years of employment in Clinton Middle School, I will be leaving my teaching position at the end of this school year, 2018-2019. Please know that I have thoroughly enjoyed working with our dedicated teachers and hard-working staff, and I will forever cherish the opportunity to have taught the children of Clinton. Thank you for that opportunity. Sincerely, Maureen O'Laughlin. So I know we, you know, we didn't just get bombarded with these in the last two weeks, but it was just as we were catching up, these are most of the people we knew were intending to retire, and I wanted to share their letters, and we will formally recognize all of our retirees at the May 28th school committee meeting.
The only thing, and I'm trying to decide, I think the... And I'm not sure if it's a memorandum of understanding or just a agreement, but the thing that we have, that the school committee has with the agreement with the town as far as the facilities director.
Yep.
I believe that was a three-year deal.
Yeah, it's due to be...
So can we just look into that for the next meeting to see if...
I don't know what the procedure is.
Yeah, because we'll probably have to get like a group together to review that or something, but I can...
Probably be the facility subcommittee.
Yeah. So I can... I'll talk to Mike Ward about that and see who all we need to get together to just pull that off.
Good point. Thank you.
Steve, for the next meeting, do you... We had this presentation on all the different... The schedule and stuff. Do you think we could have just a quick breakdown of all the different types and the frequency of the physical, student physical activity throughout the day and throughout the week for... Primarily for the elementary school and the middle school, like the younger kids more, just like a breakdown of... Because we have like wellness.
Yep.
And that's kind of... But that's broken up into like health class and physical activity. We have recess, and then we have student movement stuff. Just, I just want to get a breakdown, a snapshot, and break it down, like how many times per week, and... Because it's tough to break it down daily, because maybe some days they won't have, you know...
Yeah, we'll try to get some together that captures it.
Yeah, thank you.
Just kind of, yeah. I can get some.
Anything else? Joel, go ahead. One second. Yeah, I just have one other thing under new business, too, or old business, I guess it is, that if it's possible for you to have just a brief update, sort of building on your mid-year update for the evaluation process, can... If for the 28th, I want to make sure that I just... You start thinking about the evaluation process for Dr. Meyer, and I will forward you tomorrow an electronic copy of the DESE rubric and then the form. And if you can get that form to me, is June 1st work? Does that give you enough time? Then I can compile it for the June 17th meeting based on your feedback and Dr. Meyer's feedback on the 28th.
Okay.
That work? Okay. Mr. Hastings?
I propose a bench, Your Honor.
So moved. You can have the bench.
And I don't know if I have to do this, but I just... I've talked to Dr. Meyer about this. I think, Tina, one of your previous administrations of service, I think you mentioned about the half-days at the end of the school year. I think I kind of over... Kind of opened it up to be understood, but I just felt it out of courtesy that we'd like to request like we do every year, though with the schedule of this year of not missing with any snow days, we're really tight. So we usually ask for those four half-days early release, and this year, I'm only asking for three because we really just can't fit it into the schedule.